Good evening. This is the Canal Winchester Public Hearing dated June 2nd, 2025. Clerk, may we have the call to order, please?
Ms. Amick.
Present.
Ms. Amis.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Here. Question to excuse Mr. Bennett.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Buskirk to excuse Mr. Bennett. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk.
Yes.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Ms. Amis.
Yes.
Thank you. The purpose of the public hearing today is regarding ordinance 25-015. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
In ordinance amending ordinance number 52-01 to adopt the revised preliminary development plan for the Green Gate Plaza development, a part of the original fiber property zone PCD.
Thank you. Next item is the staff report. Mr. Moore.
Good evening. I'm going to be going over the preliminary development plan for Green Gate Plaza this evening. Have a brief presentation to go over some of the major components of that. We'll be covering the planning and zoning recommendation to City Council, as well as some additional staff notes that have developed along the way. So the subject parcel is a 17.9 acres at the corner of Dove Parkway and Dally Road. The overall tract of land, roughly 40 acres, is everything from Easy Road all the way to Dove Parkway along Dally. Has two separate zonings. The property owner received a rezoning to a PUD back in 2023, which is the green section, a kind of split zoning this parcel. The remainder of the parcel is Zone Plan Commercial District, which was zoned in 2001, primarily follows a 2001 zoning ordinance that adopted the development standards for that site. Just behind the property is the Redwood Development for multifamily housing. On the opposite side of Dally Road is at Canal Point Industrial Park. So up on the screen is the exhibit, just showing the legal boundary of the property they're requesting to get the preliminary plan for. Again, this is 17.9 acres out of the overall 39 acre parcel that's shown on the screen. This plan for this Plan Commercial District was zoned in 2001 with the zoning text for Green Gates. This text, the full text, is provided in the application, your packet to kind of skim over as we go through this process. Essentially, over 300 acres was master zoned at the time, including this site where Redwood is going, the Green Gate Cove detached condo community further east, the Stark rezoning you guys are looking at tonight was a part of this overall package, and also the entire Meyer sub-area was a part of this, the zoned area. So at the time, when they zoned these multiple sites, they did not create preliminary plans showing how the entire 300 acres is going to develop. They left it up to future developers to come through and show how their plans fit the text and usage that was permitted or contemplated at the time. And then City Council went through and reviewed the preliminary plan and also final development plans for anything taking place in these properties. So this site is going through a preliminary plan process right now, showing how the current developer plans on laying out this 17.9 acres. This site previously, with the entire 40 acres, including what was rezoned in the north, was rezoned for a development called Winchester Circle in 2008. That was for a development that had outlots fronting Dally Road, had two big box stores, one primarily what you're seeing today, the other one was just north of Green Gate Boulevard, to kind of creating a commercial plaza concept. That plan expired in 2014, so there's no active preliminary plan on the property. So that's what the applicant is going through, this exercise this evening, is to establish a new preliminary plan for how to lay out the site and to file future final development plans for construction. So out of the 17 acres, this is existing, you know, site conditions map. You can see here there's some cluster of trees that exist just south of where we're going to construct Green Gate Boulevard later this year. To the far east of the property or the north, the top of your screen, you can see there's an existing landscape buffer that separates this property from the Redwood apartment developments on the other side. The applicant has put together this plan for you, showing how they're going to develop this into separate out parcels. So this plan creates a total of five out parcels, the largest being the 13 acres in the middle. There are two out parcels that will front Green Gate Boulevard, and then two out parcels that will front Dally Road. This applicant is only seeking, in the future, to purchase the large 13 acre out parcel and the one that's labeled as fuel outlot. They are purchasing, purchasing that from the property owner, but as part of their process and commitments with the property owner, they're creating the preliminary plan for the entire 17 acres. So that's what you're reviewing this evening, is how the entire 17 acres is going to be planned for development. And then in the future, this applicant will come back with a final development plan, showing all the details for how they plan on accomplishing that. So take some of these graphics with building places and stuff, as conceptual nature at this time. So the, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I heard you right. Did you say that the, on this map here, the bottom stuff's going to be the fuel center, but the two outlets that are kind of sorted out there, those are, that are on Green Gate, those are not part of their purchase?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So this is the conceptual plan that we're going to be going over this evening. When looking at the 2001 zoning code, there are two sections that an application needs to meet. The first is the zoning code requirements for a plan, preliminary plan submittal. The first is essentially this graphic here, showing a topographic map of adjacent properties, natural features. So the applicant has provided that. Within that same vein, they have to provide a site layout on how they plan on dividing the property as part of the plan's approval. It's not to say that this preliminary plan can be further defined later to create more outlots or smaller outlots, but this is the intention between how they plan on developing on it. When looking at the second criteria B is a schematic plan showing the general development of the tract of land, the location of proposed structures, parking lot layouts, and other development features of all out parcels. The applicant has done that here by showing the primary anchor to this development would be a large grocer, that would be to the far east of the site, taking up that 13 acres. As you look in the plan, you can start to see some curb cuts between this large parking lot and all of the outlots, how it creates a traffic circulation pattern. There's some sidewalk connectivity shown for the large user and how that ties into the regional system of both the private walk along Dove, the public sidewalk that will be constructed along Green Gate Boulevard. It also shows a new ride-in, ride-out along Dally Road, that will be split about halfway between Dove Parkway and the future Green Gate Boulevard. When looking at criteria C is an engineering feasibility statement, shows they have adequate access to public services for water, sewer, and storm. The applicant has provided a letter from their civil engineer in your packet showing that those utilities are available to serve the site, and that they plan on doing any of the extensions necessary to serve the entirety of the 17 acres. Criteria D is for the traffic circulation pattern with public and private streets, showing pedestrian routing, as well as showing this does not impact the existing transportation facilities. You can see on this plan, they're proposing to have two northbound connector roads. One is almost centered on the site, that will line up to the plans for the roadway on the future, the adjacent property to the north, that is zoned for the 244 multifamily apartments and four commercial outlots along Dally. So that is shown just on the left side of the screen, is lining up, creating that curve that leads to the front of the proposed grocery store. That will connect all the way through to Dove Parkway. When looking at the far east side of the site, which is on the top of the screen, you can also see a secondary connection drive that doesn't connect totally through to Dove Parkway, but serves as more of the access road for the loading and heavier use for the trucks.
Mr. Moore, excuse me, just for the record, Mr. Bennett arrived at 5:40 PM. Continue, please.
The utility plans that the applicant has put together are up on the screen. Again, blue is water, green is sanitary sewer, and red is storm sewer. I just added some color to this graphic here, just showing that the applicant has planned on all the outlots having access to utilities, including the stormwater features for the Preliminary landscape plan is also part of the 2001 zoning code requirements. This landscape plan just needs to identify what the standards in the 2001 zoning code are, and that the applicant intends on meeting them. With this plan here, again, all the little bubbles for trees are all conceptual at this point. It's really the table on the right-hand side, which is the commitments that they plan on meeting, the development requirements of 2001. Specifically with the Green Gate development text for the master rezoning, this section on Dally Road was required to have a 75-foot landscape buffer behind the right-of-way that screened any of the commercial development from Dally Road. That can be seen on this graphic as well, with those clusters of trees and that large setback from the parking lot to the Dally Road right-of-way. That landscape requirement is very prescriptive in the 2001 code, has a certain number of trees, bushes, for every linear feet of frontage, as well as a two-foot mound that kind of undulates throughout that, that frontage, really creating a green barrier between Dally Road and the commercial development. So the applicant has also acknowledged committing to that. Another little thing that's required is just showing lighting plans and how the lighting is going to look for the entire commercial sub-district. So the applicant has put together on the screen the response to that, showing that they're going to permit the LED-style wall pack lighting and LED-style shoebox fixtures throughout the parking lot. Part of the preliminary planner view is just showing some intent for building design, showing that you're going to meet the 2001 zoning text requirements, as well as the Green Gate development text requirements for building materials. So the applicant has put together this plan, this again is highly based off their future request for a final development plan for a grocery store, but to show that the building design that they have put together does meet the 2001 ordinance for building material requirements. I have, again, you have a copy of that zoning text in your packet, but if anybody wants to reference it, it's starting on kind of this title sheet here. And so if you scroll to the Plan Commercial District area, sorry, I should have left it with this. It starts with parking, sidewalk commitments, signage commitments, building location, building height, building material, landscaping. Something a little unique that City Council here is probably not used to seeing for like any building materials in this instance, is that the exterior walls are to be of hard service masonry with a maximum of 30% of the building materials being accent material. With that hard service masonry, face brick, split face block, fluted block, scored block are considered hard materials. So up on the screen, you can see that the building is primarily made of split face block. There is a little bit of metal accenting around the blue band, around like their main entry feature that they're going to be designing, and then some fiber cement board siding along the main entrance doors. Again, this is not something we're reviewing this evening for meeting the entire letter of the code, but the preliminary plan of what they, the applicant plans on submitting with a future application based off of the 2001 zoning requirements. One of the little nuances with the 2001 zoning text is it requires a plaza identification sign. This plaza identification sign was really, for all intents and purposes, in 2001 created to have a shopping mall. And it's kind of what I have talked to the applicant through. More or less, if you have a big monument sign like what Home Depot has or Walmart has, you don't get signs on any of the buildings. And when looking at that aspect of it, you typically don't have signs on buildings for your interior mall tenants. So if you don't allow the sign, or do a smaller sign, then the tenants can have their own onsite signage. So in response to that, the applicant has created a sign plan here that meets the 2001 zoning text identifying the name of the plaza, something that was a requirement for this Plan District in 2001. This plan does allow for all the out parcels to have onsite signage, and does not prohibit So Planning and Zoning Commission, they reviewed this application in April. They recommended to City Council that the preliminary development plan be adopted as presented, as it met all the requirements for the zoning text and all the preliminary plan review basis elements. When looking at the preliminary plan review basis, that the proposed plan is consistent with the zoning standards of ordinance 5201 and the 2001 zoning code, the proposed development is in conformity with the appropriate comprehensive plan of the area, that even the current community plan shows that this is going to be a commercial development of some sort in the future. When looking at the applicability of setbacks, distances between buildings, yard space, open space, traffic, the applicant has met all of the access drive connections to line up with all the thoroughfare plans for the area, adjacent zoning to the property to the north, existing zoning for the property to the south. The next criteria is that any modification or minimum development standards are properly identified and justified in this development text. At the time, Planning and Zoning reviewed this, there was no deviations that were identified for their review. And then the proposed development standards are in conformity with any design or site planning guidelines by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, this development during Planning and Zoning's review met both ordinance 5101 and the 2001 zoning code, which was specifically referenced within that ordinance to adopt the Green Gate PCD district. The final criteria is that the plan provides for a coordination and integration of individually designed buildings in one Plan District. Again, the applicant shows on their overall site plan how they plan on laying all five out parcels out, how the larger tenants centered and have some supporting tenants surrounding it, meeting some of those criteria. Again, the plans clearly show, you know, Kroger is interested in building on that 13-acre outlot. They have a fuel center that they want to take an additional out parcel, so there'll be three remaining out parcels that will be for sale by the property owner, that are not going to be, proposed to be purchased by Kroger's. When looking at the plans, again, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this development text. After Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this proposal, staff was reviewing everything with the law director for the city on the unique 2001 zoning code that's referenced in this text. During that review, post the April Planning and Zoning meeting, it was determined that the city actually has an overlay district that encompasses this property, which is the Violet Point Overlay by Chapter 1175.02. I gave you guys all copies of that before the discussion here. That overlay district covers everything within the seat of land use boundary, and what shared standards are agreed upon between Canal Winchester and Violet Township within that overlay district. This overlay district adds another kind of layer to the zoning text and items that the applicant needs to meet for this property. However, it's not everything within this overlay district. The way that the overlay was adopted was that it is enforceable to the entire seat of boundary. However, if you have a Plan District that specifically references zoning standards, the overlay doesn't apply, because the plan already contemplated some design aesthetics or items. So with that copy I handed out to you guys, everything that's highlighted within there has been identified to apply to this entire 17-acre tract of land. It's something that staff hasn't made the applicant aware of, that way they can adjust their plans accordingly. One of the big-ticket items that the applicant primarily said that they don't have the ability to adjust is the parking setback for this facility. So the zoning overlay district requires for any parking to be located in front of a building. First, the building has to be over 20,000 square feet, which their proposal would meet during the final development plan. The second condition is the building has to be over 300 feet away from the public right-of-way, which this would meet. The third condition is that the parking has to be over 200 feet away from the public right-of-way. So the applicant put together this graphic, sent you guys all a note last week regarding it. The red line on the graphic shows 200 feet away from the public right-of-way, where based off of the overlay district, they would be permitted to have parking beyond that, between that red line and the building. The applicant is requesting, with this additional information, being aware of it and how it impacts their overall site and usability of the site, that City Council actually waives this portion of the 1175 overlay district with the adoption of the preliminary plan. The counter to waiving this component with the 2000, waiving this component from the site, is they can always come back and ask for a variance from Planning and Zoning Commission later, and not through City Council. However, the variance process doesn't come back through City Council, and will apply to any development that happens on this parcel, whether or not this applicant wants to move forward or not. Staff working with the applicant realizes asking for this relief now, knowing it exists, is a much cleaner and simpler process that way. City Council is aware of it, that way you know that this takes effect on this current site plan. Looking through the overlay text I sent you, or I provided to you, there are other sections within here that the applicant has acknowledged they'll have to adjust their plans to meet or ask for variances later. This is really the big one that is creating a hurdle for them to present to you guys this evening. So if you have any questions for me about the 2001 ordinance that adopted PCD text, the 2001 zoning code that takes effect, or this Chapter 1175 overlay, I'd be glad to help answer. Advocate's here as well to talk to you about the project. Again, the reminder, this is approving this layout this evening, is for five outlots on this 17.9 acres, knowing that there will be connectivity and circulation between them. Not any specific user, not any specific component to the final development plan piece. It's definitely something you can have a conversation with me and the applicant about, knowing that they're going to be filing for something in the future related to something substantially similar to this. But really what we're approving this evening is conforming to the development standards of the overlay district, and then the applicant's request to waive one of those items within the overlay district.
One quick question. On the waiver of the parking lot, obviously it makes sense, because you've got to have enough parking spots for the grocery store. But did I understand correctly saying that if we waive this, it's only pertains, if the applicant moves forward, it would go in as a variance after the fact that it would be grandfathered basically to that land, no matter who would come in? Or did I misunderstand that?
No, I may have not explained it well enough. So the preliminary development plan is valid for five years pending no action has taken place on the property. If it's granted later by a variance, then the variance is for the life of the property. The preliminary development plan does not tie the user identified on here, or any user, neither does a variance approval. This waiver with the adoption of the preliminary plan is just acknowledging that they're requesting to change a standard that was adopted by the overlay district, rather than acknowledging they're deficient in something, and then later coming back and asking for relief.
Mr. Moore, so a couple of questions. Does the request for the, to move that parking line to the 75 feet, does that apply to the entire property line?
That would...
The reason I ask is because we have several out parcels that are planned for that area. And as you saw at the Meyer, I mean, you and I both know all the parking's going to kind of push back, so it's not front-facing, and this is kind of destroying that whole entire look of that.
So if you, why print these out? If you flip to page seven, the third, the second paragraph down, subsection 10. So it says that buildings larger than 20,000 square feet or attached to existing inline retail shall be permitted to have parking in front of the building. So that first line is saying that anything less than 20,000 square feet of collective building space doesn't automatically get parking in front of the building. The next kind of part of that same sentence says that that building that's over 20,000 square feet has to be 300 feet from the public right-of-way. So in this instance, their plan is showing the large outlaw user meets criteria one and two, just does not meet criteria three, which is the parking setback. So the other out parcels along this property would first have to have a building over 20,000 square feet, and have the building setback over 300 feet from the public right-of-way? The first is possible, the second for setbacks is not.
Awesome. I just wanted to ensure that, because I know we've worked really hard to make our drive-throughs in case, and a lot of our parking looked a little bit better. So what's the minimum number of spots that they're required to have on this?
So the 2001 zoning code, I believe, is one parking space for every like 250 square feet of building. This site is, in my opinion, not, doesn't look to be overparked based off that ratio. I think Kroger has even, has their own internal standards, which is one space for every 300 or 350 square feet of building, which is less than what the city's minimums are. They can be the ones to answer that question for you, from their end. I do know that one of the items that they're going to be adjusting to meet the overlay district is we require only 12 parking spaces in a row without an island. You know, that's going to reduce the number of parking stalls when they start putting those parking lot islands in. Things of that nature will further kind of change the confines of total number of spaces you can park in. But I would say the general layout probably won't shift, meeting other sections of this overlay standards.
Thank you. I'll come back. I have more, but I...
No, go ahead. I've got a lot, too.
You do? Okay. Right? Start at my back of my top here. The Howe Industrial, I'm trying to look and see, the Green Gate, proposed Green Gate future road-
Yeah.
Doesn't look like it's on the property line to connect straight across to Howe. Now, optical illusions, I'm sure. But when you look at that, it's not like a clear cut over. It also doesn't look like it's on the same property line. So is this on the property that they're acquiring or is this on the property next? Because it looks like it's on the property next to it.
Is this graphic helpful?
So Green Gate is not coming out. It shows that it's going to connect to Howe Industrial.
I thought you said there was an offset.
You're talking about, excuse me, you're talking about Howe Industrial's not shown on this plan.
Well-
That's correct.
And the line looks like it's supposed to go straight across. But Green Gate, the actual road that you're proposing, doesn't look like it's on the same property that the Kroger line is on.
I understand. So Howe Industrial Parkway is not shown on these plans? It would be, I wish this laser worked. If you follow Green Gate Boulevard and terminate it in between where it says Tobin and Howe Parkway LLC, there is a public roadway. It's just not shown on these drawings.
Well, that's what I figured. So it's going to hopefully go across.
Correct.
But whose property line is this fall on? Is it theirs or is it theirs?
So the city, so currently, right now, as of this very second time, this green property that's just to the north-
Right.
Where it says Green Gate Boulevard and then what's outlined in baby blue, that is all one 40 acre parcel. The applicant is going to be splitting Green Gate Boulevard and giving it to the city. The city's constructing Green Gate Boulevard.
So you're going to own that?
Yeah, the city's going to own Green Gate Boulevard and it is slated to start construction later this year.
Okay. So can I ask a couple, like, building specific questions or?
You can ask. If I can answer it, I'll try to answer it.
Fabulous. So what, this goes back up to the condominiums, town apartments that are back there. So what level of protection do we have for those residents to ensure noise, trash receptacles emptying in the middle of the night, delivery trucks? Like, what are we doing to protect their boundary?
So the 2001 zoning code has requirements for buffering with landscaping. The landscape buffer is already existing.
And I know there's someone-
There's a tree line that's right there.
Right.
The applicant, hopefully I'm not making anybody sick by jumping around. So they're showing the existing tree line buffer here on the right-hand side. One of the conversations, just thinking ahead to the next step with the applicant, was tried to do infill and add additional landscaping to that area, primarily because there's a space constraint on our 2001 zoning code. It requires one tree for every thousand square feet of building. Big building, a lot of trees.
Right.
You know, sort of dumb math, but trying to find a place to fill it. You know, increasing the vegetation within that buffer is something staff has encouraged when thinking about the next step. There is no other standard within the 2001 zoning code between any operational hours for loading, unloading. Setbacks is probably the only thing that, you know, contemplates that and all the setbacks are being met.
So we see this a lot at the Home Depot where the trash is blowing across the parking lot and it's not being collected. Is there some sort of, other than the natural barrier of trees and some additional plantage, is there anything that's going to stop all the trash coming? As much as I love to say it's going to be spotless, I mean, that's what we hope for, but realistically, what's going to prevent stuff from going into this neighborhood?
In terms of a physical barrier, I would say the only physical barrier you have is the building itself. The applicants have not at least communicated with me any type of physical barrier between this site and then the apartments to the east.
Okay. I mean, that's a big concern for me because it is so close to that property line and those houses, the apartments are very close to where the property line is. I'm really concerned about the noise level of what's just going to be coming in and out with trucks and deliveries and the trash truck, which we had to deal with in other places at 2:00 in the morning. So that's just thought. I'll stop for now.
Well, there's something in this code about when it's adjacent to a residential, existing residential use with light. And I saw something else in here, Andrew, about six feet height next to residential. Is that, where's that in here? Did I, am I hallucinating or?
It depends which section of code you're looking at. Are you looking at the overlay, the 2001?
Yeah, I think it was-
Or the Green Gate development text.
The overlay, he's in the-
The highlighted.
Yeah, so anything within the highlighted area would apply to this property.
Where are the apartments on this map here?
So if you are-
Which ones? The ones that haven't been built yet or the ones that have been now?
Really great. So there's your Kroger and there's your apartments. They back right up to it.
That is-
That's Redwood.
That is Redwood, okay. Okay.
Yeah, so Green Gate Boulevard will connect Diley Road to Hill Road. Green Gate Cove, that Ryan Holmes community has already constructed the first, you know, two-thirds of that road or half a road. The city is going to be going in and constructing the remainder that splits the Redwood Development and then that splits this farm field all the way to tee into Howe Industrial Parkway.
There was also an entrance out onto Dove Parkway from the site and a couple of drawings.
Correct, yes. So when this plan was developed, when the Redwood plan was developed, the city had long-term thoroughfare plans to interconnect this parcel. The previous plan from 2008 showed interconnectivity. That interconnectivity is really a service road or private road that connects Bucie Road all the way down to Dove Parkway. So this, I'm trying to find a good graphic here that shows it. So if you're looking at the far left-hand side of the screen, that little stub that kind of bleeds off leads to the other PUD site that was just zoned a couple of years ago for apartments and commercial outlots. That's why the road has the dogleg in it that straightens it back out in front of the front entrance at Kroger. And then it ties into Dove on the far right-hand side of the screen. The Redwood Development had a limited setback for where those public encroachments or private encroachments could take place. There's a dashed line on this plan that shows that limit. It's just on the other side of their access drive.
So that is a publicly maintained road to that point?
No. This will all be a private road. Dove Parkway and this side of the street's all private.
Okay.
This road that connects the north and south is all private to this internal-
So it's a private road, but it would most likely, according to this drawing, be used for trucks exiting the property and possibly people entering the site as well?
Yes, yeah.
I was, I was going to ask about that because that kind of puts a maintenance responsibility on to somebody else or somebody else. Somebody else's traffic is deteriorating their property.
What was the conversation with the, because the Dove Parkway, the private road you were talking about, was there conversation with that?
So when the Redwood Development was planned, that stretch of the roadway was always intended to be used for, passed through traffic by this adjacent parcel. So there was an access easement that was created back in 2013 or 2014 to allow for this parcel to feed onto it.
So they know it's coming.
It was always a part of the original plan for traffic to feed onto that section of roadway.
So do we have a street overlay that was done for this property then? When we originally did the-
It's not our roadway. It's not, it's not our easement. It's an easement between these two property owners to connect through. So it's not a public roadway.
This is getting a little sticky in my mind.
It's a private easement.
It's a private easement.
It was installed as a concrete road.
Yeah.
So it was in anticipation of the heavier load on.
Okay.
And then it looks like on this drawing that there, for the deliveries, it looks like there's a max of three bays for trucks and no truck parking.
That's correct.
In the text that we have, you know, we've had the same issue at Walmart. I just want to make sure that we have no truck parking in the front parking lot as well.
That was one of the items staff brought up to the applicant in regards to having parking islands every 12 parking stalls. I think part of the method behind that spacing is you physically restrict a 52-foot truck from actually fitting within that zone. The Walmart site does not have parking islands every 12 spaces. They only have the four or five clustered ones in the middle of the lot, which really opens up that issue even more, I believe.
Mr. Moore, unless I missed it, because we were talking about barriers, can you talk about the frontage barrier? Because the parking is so close to the right of way in the requested variance. How is that screened from Diley Road? Can you kind of repeat a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so the ordinance that adopted the 2001 PCD text for this property also requires a 75-foot landscape buffer along the entire frontage of Diley Road. So the only piece of PCD zoned property is the 17.9 acres that's left. The remainder to the north, City Council rezoned a PUD two years ago, which no longer required that landscape buffer. However, this piece requires a 75-foot landscape buffer between Diley Road and the start of any development on these out parcels. So in this instance, where you see the hard line, where that sanitary sewer's running through right there, and then the line just above it separating the parking lot from Diley Road, that is the 75-foot landscape buffer area. So that area will be planted with a prescription, a detailed prescription of trees, mounding plants. The applicant graphically tried to show that on this kind of plan sheet here. Now granted, these plants are pulled closer to Diley Road than that 75-foot buffer. You know, it could be centered a little more, it could be, you know, off-center one side or the other. Again, this is a rough illustration to show you the intent of not landscape planting. Are there any questions from council on the 2001 zoning text that's in your packet? And that's probably unique because it's old. So I wanted to make sure that was covered before we-
Mr. Moore, I have some questions. So we have the 1175 overlay districts.
Correct.
Is everything, so I know the orange applies to this project.
Correct.
Does everything else in here apply to this project?
No. Only the areas in orange.
Is there a reason why?
So provided in your packet, I gave you a copy of the memo from our law director explaining how the overlay works for the property. So if you think about the overlay as kind of layers to the process, you have the 2001 zoning code, which was the base layer that the plan was originally developed under. Then you have the Green Gate text, which added more complexity to that 2001 zoning code. And then the overlay district, which was adopted in 2005, so four years after the planned district took place, the overlay district was adopted to create a higher threshold of standards and applies only when the two bottom layers fall silent. So the two bottom layers in this instant that fall silent are mechanical equipment, trash container screening, parking lot lighting, building lighting. The 2001 ordinance for signage specifically recommends the CETA overlay district signage regs, which is what this document is.
Okay.
So this is now into effect. It covers stormwater basin design, access, loading, and parking for the sites, architectural standards for the buildings, and then drive-through screening and inline retail exemption from the architectural standards. So when looking at this plan, like if I just went to sheet seven, for an example, you can see a gap where it has architectural standards that are within there, but then there's a gap for building materials. Because the 2001 zoning code, excuse me, the 2001 ordinance that adopted the Green Gate PCD plan already has building materials in there. So this section's blank because the 2001 plan already says there's something very specific.
Okay.
So that's why that, like, that break happens. Same thing happens when you look at, like, the landscape plan. The plan specifically has a exhibit that shows the 75-foot landscape buffer, says very specifically, "Look at the 2001 landscape code." So without those specific references, that's where the overlay really starts to apply.
When you say the 2001 plan, you're referring to the original plan for this layout?
It depends on how I'm saying it.
Yeah, that's one-
This document on the left-hand side of the screen was adopted on September 17th, 2001.
And that is ex-apply?
No. This is active. This is active. You read the first italicized line that says note, it references anything not in here, reverts back to the 2001 zoning code adopted by ordinance 4101.
In our packet, there's that zoning hierarchy. That might be helpful if you brought that up. Do you have?
I don't have it up on the screen, but that's what I was describing with Mr. Shea is the layers to the plan. So if you pull up that hierarchy, it talks about that the 2001 zoning code is the base. This zoning text for Green Gate's document, which is in the applicant's packet, is the next layer of commitments. And then the Chapter 1175 overlay district are additional requirements that City Council has adopted and post this plan being approved.
I would really like to see a graphic of what we, as a body, approved for the PUD on the remainder of the property, so that we can get a good visual of what that's all going to look like when it's built out, just for our own understanding. Because it's been two years since this body approved those 224 apartments and four outlots and one clubhouse-style restaurant in it. And I think it would be really good for this body when deliberating this particular project because they are conjoined and they are the same piece of property, to see how that looks all together. That's thing one. I've got real concerns that this is going to turn into a 256 gender road-type traffic situation. And what things can we do now before we build this to alleviate that from happening?
So in regards to the graphic, that's something I can certainly put together and provide to you guys by the next council meeting. I can take some liberties in assuming how certain things would lay out. The applicant already, for that project, already put like how the apartments laid out, so that's a copy and paste kind of item. Same thing with like, you know, the grocery store on this site. I could copy and paste that. None of the outlots have ever been defined, so I can just put some blocks down based off of setbacks. And that can maybe give you some clarity, just from a verbal discussion on that. On this graphic here, you would have, I wish this laser worked, you would have the project being proposed this evening have a large box building that it takes up that 13 acres in the back with parking in the front. The outlots would have the buildings 75 feet away from Diley Road and have the buildings immediately behind that 75-foot frontage and parking behind the buildings. On the parcel to the left that was zoned a few years ago, you'd have two-thirds of the property in the back, which would be multifamily. You'd have four outlots in the front that are probably comparable in size to the fuel center outlot, shown on here for scale. All of those buildings would be between 40 and 55 feet away from Diley Road, so closer to Diley than what is on the screen here, but would have all the parking to the side or behind the buildings. So those similarities would be the same, just the landscape screening between the two properties is completely different because there's completely different standards. And the building placements would vary within 20 feet of each other because of completely different standards.
Because when they came and this body approved the PUD, it changed the standards for that property.
The PUD essentially made developing the parcel on the left-hand side of this screen harder than what the current application is proposing.
Okay.
They had to go through a whole- They had to go through a whole process and meet all current standards. This plan is 2001 standards with a little bit of current standards sprinkled in, which is why I gave you a copy of that highlighted document.
And also back to that parking thing, where they said they couldn't do it. If we pulled some of those outlets, outlots on there, I think you would hit that standard that we put out previously, correct? Like if you lost that one that's up at the upper-left corner of the screen, you know, you might be able to move some of your parking around the building and now have...
If they shifted like their concept layout here, is that what you're...
Just, I mean, moving the parking around rather than, yeah, would be more land, but it would also keep it standard with what we've done out there through Meyer, right?
So this graphic doesn't really show it super well, but there's also the 200-foot setback off of Green Gate Boulevard, so that that red line ends up being an L, if you remove that outlot. So if you remove that outlot, then they would have just the variance for a different road. I would like just to note that the distance between that red line of the outlot and the landscape buffer is probably not big enough to build something on and park it.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess it could be, but just from eyeballing here with you, it completely changes the site.
Okay.
I'm sure the applicant would probably go in way more technical detail than that, but just from a quick look with you all, it creates different hurdles.
And do we need the extra ingress egress there on...
Diley?
Diley.
So the original 2001 planned district exhibits showed that this site would have a write-in, write-out on Diley. So that's consistent in that regard. Diley Road also, highly convenient, has the median that is directly on the other side of that write-in, write-out. So it'll truly function as a write-in, write-out.
And then are we going to run into a similar situation like we are experiencing now on Winchester Boulevard, where we have these two sites with one egra, each opposite egresses right down the road? I don't know how far that is, I mean, probably 250 feet from the next traffic intersection. And we're going to turn around and create another cluster that we're already spending a million dollars to fix and just doing it again on this one?
If I'm understanding your question...
I know I'm...
The work at Winchester Boulevard terminates at the corporation limits to the west, and there's no connector road that continues it towards the west. With Green Gate Boulevard we're putting in, it'll connect Hill Road to Diley Road, creating another essentially collector road to fund the traffic. So with the addition of any development on this site, this site in particular, based on what they're showing, has one, two, three, four, five, five ways to leave just this 17 acres. And then if you go to the north, you'd have an additional one, two, three, four. And if you go to the east, you have another one, two, three, four. You know, the number of access points dramatically increase. While you're looking at the Winchester Boulevard example, the only direction you can go is east. Because if you go south to railroad tracks, you have to go back east. If you go north to Bob Evans, the only exit is going east to Gender Road. So it's a completely different scenario, I guess, from a connectivity standpoint.
Okay. Then, and those are well-made points, because I can actually see them. Can we limit left turns coming out of that intersection?
Of Green Gate Boulevard?
On Green Gate Boulevard.
So Green Gate Boulevard has been fully designed. It's going to start construction later this year. There's been traffic studies that have been done to designate its turn movements. With the development on either one of these parcels in that 40-acre conglomerate, that's what's going to trigger the traffic light to be installed.
See, I don't want, I don't want to see us put another light in, because then we just are down the road to turn it back into Winchester Boulevard and turn it back into another traffic nightmare. I realize there's more directions to go, but I think we need to be smart while we have the opportunity about it. I understand that Green Gate is being constructed this summer, and I understand that it's designed to set. But I'm also sitting here going, well, we're adding a lot more people to Green Gate. I know you all have planned for it for years and years and years, but the rest of us are just kind of going, wow, this, there are going to be a lot of people here. This is going to turn into a traffic nightmare.
If it's helpful, we can provide a copy of the traffic study for Green Gate Boulevard for your next review as well.
Well, I'm sure it takes into account this, right?
It absolutely takes into account commercial development on this property.
I think it's hard because we have Duff, then Green Gate, and then, I mean, that's like three traffic lights, right back, 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 back.
But you've got the other site right next to it that we've already approved, and that didn't have a lot of ingress egress, if I remember.
It has more than this site.
Okay.
It has more.
In her own BUCI, that way. You can access the site on BUCI.
The other site has access to BUCI, yeah.
It has two access points on BUCI, two on Green Gate Boulevard.
Okay. So I mean, but I just, all right, I've said my piece.
Mr. Moore, a question on our appearance standards. I know City Council went through quite a practice when they went through the Meyer development, down to the color of the brick on the building. I know this is in that same sort of area with all these different overlays. Can you sort of maybe speak to the appearance standards?
So the...
Because it feels like...
An overall exhibit here.
This is very different than everything else that sort of resides within our city right now.
Yeah, so when looking at kind of the way visually our commercial development on Gender Road has evolved, you had one property owner that controlled the, that Kroger development, how it looked, that controlled the Walmart development, how that looked, and also controlled like the little subsidiary where Donato's Pizza and stuff. So you had one developer requiring all those buildings to have certain architectural colors. We later turned those self-guided standards into our commercial development standards in 2012, which put more rigorous requirements for orientation of building, percentage of window glass, percentage of masonry material, basically locked in those standards to apply to the city of Canal Winchester. This property was zoned in 2001, so prior to the commercial development standards being developed. In 2001, there were no standards for building materials. You just had setbacks in building height. That's really all it took to build anything commercially.
So...
When this development text was constructed, sorry to cut you off by just one last...
You're fine. I was cutting you off, actually.
When looking at this document in their applicant's packet, when it talks about building materials for all exterior buildings, there are going to be hard-surface masonry of face bricks, split-face block, fluted block, scored block, except for stucco. This was revolutionary in 2001, because there was building material standards.
Sure.
Those have since been updated. But because the development text is very specific on building standards, those updates from the overlay don't automatically apply.
It's interesting how certain standards apply and certain standards don't, right? Like, you know, hey, this parking standard is now inhibiting our development, and we need relief from this standard, but we have other standards that we've applied to every other sort of retail development in the past. I was trying to scroll through my packet, because I even believe in the packet, there's, I think, a visual representation of the fuel station that doesn't even match the quality of the fuel station that sits out on Gender Road. It's at least cased in brick. And so I guess I'm struggling with that a little bit.
I totally...
Struggling with the fact that this also...
And I apologize.
Standards that we have would indicate this development does belong here.
Yeah. And I apologize, Mr. Ben, I missed a portion of your question originally that I'm just now catching up on.
Maybe I missed it too.
When you brought up the Meyer development. So that was a part of this, this plan for zoning text for Green Gates. So Meyer did not have to build the building that's there. It could have been a block building.
Okay.
However, Meyer was requesting to change the 2005 CETA overlay, which had different types of standards. So a good example was in 2005, there was a maximum size of a building you could construct at 70,000 square feet. So Meyer exceeds 70,000 square feet. So they asked Planning and Zoning Commission for a variance to vary from that, same as what the applicant is doing with this request. So in this instance, Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the deviations the applicant wanted, then looked at standard practice and came up with what you see today. And all intents and purposes, that's what the applicant is doing this evening, has identified something that they can't or don't want to meet in current practice, and they're asking City Council to modify it.
I'm going to concur with Will. It's not the previous building. It's very, I mean, I understand it's a commercial thing, but when we talked about the Gender Road, so you had Bonnie Rubin, who really was a brick person. I mean, and a lot of that when they were developing like Polaris and all the different malls, they had a brick color. And Bonnie was huge on sticking with those kind of patterns as he developed out. And so that's why we see all of that along the Gender Road corridor. But this looks very commercial, and it looks very plain and not very fun, and the gas station looks like something I would see on campus.
I think we can...
Better looking than...
When we're ready, we can let the applicant...
They better let her know.
Yeah, I'm sure, thank you both for those comments. That is, I'm sure, something you can address with the applicant directly on their building design choice.
Well, I think if this concludes staff's report, the next item on the agenda is the public comment section. I don't know if there is any public comment pursuant to this specific topic for the public hearing, which is gone, really, by the way.
Mr. Ben, I'd like to recommend that the crew from Kroger's be given an opportunity to make a brief presentation.
Yep. If there is no one from the public who wished to speak tonight, nobody, okay, I think we're good.
Chuck said no, it's good.
No comments. Then yes.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Andrew Gardner with V3 Companies. We're the civil engineers for Kroger on this project. A couple of things I want to clarify that I don't think maybe came through quite accurately. You know, tonight is a preliminary development plan approval. We're not asking for approval of those building elevations.
Yep.
You know, certainly appreciate your feedback, but we will be coming back with a final development plan approval, and we'll have an opportunity to hash that out and hopefully come up with a, with a building elevation that everybody in Canal Winchester is excited about. So I don't want to waste your time or anyone's time kind of beating that up too much. I'm not the architect. I don't have the architect here tonight, so I don't want to speak too much on building materials and things like that. With respect to the setback request, you know, as Andrew stated, you know, when this was zoned in 2001, we had the 75-foot landscape buffer. And now with the overlay, it's requiring this 200-foot buffer. The difference between this site and maybe the Meyer site, for example, is the Meyer site's much deeper. You have the space there to do a store this size, still have your parking, and still have sizable out parcels out front with still a landscape buffer in front of those. This parcel's simply not that deep. You know, in 2001, this was sort of, I think, with that zoning, you know, the intent was to still do a type of big-box development here. But with the overlay and that 200-foot restriction, it's just simply not feasible. Operationally, to have a parking field that shallow for a grocery store and to try to put it on the side, it just doesn't work well for us. It really creates more pedestrian traffic where you don't want it, and it becomes an unsafe situation. So I mean, we really, you know, that's the reason that we're asking for this, for this, you know, relief to this standard. You know, I wrote that email honestly, and I appreciate Andrew's guidance through this whole thing, because the zoning codes confused us too, you know. So that's, that was, that's the reason for the request. You know, other than that, I'll speak a little bit to, you know, maybe some of the screening, things like that. Dumpsters, for example, all Kroger has behind these stores is a compactor, and it is recessed down in our dock, so it's very well-hidden. It's not something that's just sitting back there. I know some of the older stores, I don't know what's on your other canal store, haven't been back there in years, but on these new ones, that's recessed down in the dock, so it's not something that's seen. You know, these are not 24-hour stores anymore, so there's not necessarily trucks coming at, you know, 2:00 in the morning and things like that for, to bother the residents either. With respect to additional screening back there, you know, we can certainly look at putting a fence in or something, but we may have to ask for you for some relief on the trees, because it's, they're very, very dense back there, and, you know, we can't fit everything all the time. So, but that again is something that we can take a look at and, and maybe address with the final development plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you have for me. I've done countless Krogers throughout the state of Ohio, so I'm pretty good at knowing what we need.
Mr. Gardner, is the, I just very quickly counted, and I think it's 112 parking spots. Does that sound about right? That...
That we would lose?
Yes.
I'd have to count it, that's probably about right. To speak a little on the parking, Kroger's internal parking standard is about four spaces for every thousand square feet of store. As this plan is drawn right now, I believe it's at like 4.1 or 4.19, somewhere right in there. So it's just, just above that minimum standard. I actually have gone back and redrawn this plan in anticipation of submitting a final development plan, added the additional landscape islands that Andrew mentioned to make one every 12 feet, and so on. And with that, it actually drops our parking down to about 3.96 parking spaces per thousand. So we're going to be just below Kroger's minimum standard. They know that, they're okay with it, they're still, they still want to move forward with the project.
Thank you. I appreciate you answering my questions.
You're very welcome.
For at least a drop.
Yeah. I appreciate the feedback, and I think, you know, the concern I have is that, you know, and I understand we're not reviewing, you know, building and architectural setback, all those things, but at the same point, you know, you're looking for relief from a certain standard, I'm looking for Kroger to maybe meet a certain standard. And, you know, I think, I guess I'd feel better if we were both on the same page with that, prior to me having to approve something. I feel like I could, you know, if we gave you the approval, there's no, there's no necessary commitment on Kroger's end to sort of, you know, raise, raise the architectural appearance standards, because, well, you know, we're past that point, right? Here we sit today, and, you know, to your point, we can't move forward without this relief. And in my mind, I have a hard time approving this, giving that it doesn't fit the standard. To your point, it is too big for this spot. Meyer has a much bigger lot, it's much better suited for that case. It allows for traffic dispersment because it has so much more room. Here, we're looking to, you know, fit something nestled very tightly into a package that, according to our standards, is not designed for. And so I guess, you know, I'm struggling with that, just to be very frank and honest.
Well, again, I guess, you know, I'm going to fall back again on the preliminary versus the final development plan. I mean, you know, my anticipation here would be to, you know, hopefully get approval of the preliminary development plan and give us a chance to come back with a final development plan and maybe address those concerns on the elevations. That's, right now, all you're really approving is the, is the layout of those lots and the access... points, am I correct in stating that, Andrew?
Sorry, yes, the preliminary development plan is basically approving how the entire 17.9 acres is being developed, that would be layout, circulation, proposed building location, parking location, as well as the applicant's ability to conform to all of the miscellaneous standards with the 2001 code, green gate ordinance text, and the overlay district. So in this instance, the applicant's requesting to change one of the overlay standards, and so it sounds like that that is the modification they're seeking to receive approval.
So, Mr. Moore, would it be appropriate to say that my request is to add some of our appearance standards that aren't in line with some of these, to, you know, as he's asking for a modification, I'm asking for additional?
I would say now is the, during the preliminary plan is the only time you can require additional changes.
Mr. Gardner, I know that, and keep me honest here, you recently opened a store at Jerome Township.
That is correct.
And it's nice, and it's much more aligned to the aesthetics of Canal Winchester than the current renderings that we're seeing, so I guess to piggyback on what Mr. Bennett is saying, do you see getting somewhere closer, because what it sounds like to me, you're meeting the standard, I get that, and unfortunately, that standard just is not in line with what our residents are accustomed to, prefer, that's the aesthetic that is appropriate for our community. Can you see some level of rework there?
I'm going to defer to my Kroger colleagues, you guys want to answer that?
Well, we already hit Jim Brown on the right end, so.
Jim Brown, construction manager with Kroger, our architect is Moody Nolan, they're already working with Canal on revising and making sure that we are meeting all the standards that were expected with the development of the Meyer building, and there are certainly changes that are going to be made, there's pilasters that are going to be added to the building, there's changes to the signage package, there's quite a few things that are going on right now, we didn't expect to even discuss it at this point, because as noted, this is the preliminary expectation.
And we do understand that, they just kind of go hand in hand, for those of us who have to cast a vote, they just do sort of go hand in hand, so.
Yeah, sure, we certainly want to meet your standards, but your standards are pretty well-developed, it's all spelled out.
Understood.
So, yeah, so, that's what we're going off.
Well, as Mr. Moore said, this is our time to negotiate a little bit on the things that the council members are looking for as well, would it be too much, so what is the intention on reads for this, because I guess I would like to see a preliminary, is it three reads?
We're not doing three reads on ordinance, you all are going to waive it for these guys?
That's what I'm asking, is what the request was.
Our request would be to waive the third reading, we are hoping to break ground even yet this year on this project.
We're still talking about what it's going to look like.
We understand.
So would it be advantageous for you to bring in a preliminary of what you, like a better rendering of what the plant's going to look like and the gas station for the next meeting, but that, you could send ahead of time for us to review?
Just forgive me, but doesn't that, aren't we getting into the final development plan then, you still have to approve?
So, how many readings will we have for the final development plan?
Well, we actually see it.
Right now, it's set for three, now, we would, in my conversations with Andrew early on, he sort of indicated to me that we'd probably go through three on the preliminary and hopefully request waiving the third on the final, at least, that's the advice I've gotten in my conversations from staff, you know, we also are wary, y'all take recess in August, so, you know, we're very, you know, we're very anxious to get this project started, you know, Kroger's has allocated dollars in 2025 to break ground on this project, and we're pretty excited about it.
Yeah, I love a good Kroger shopping trip too, but got to make sure we do it right. Yes, Mr.?
Just one, I guess, clarifying comment, I think the applicant did say something that was very clear, and I didn't want that to go unmissed, the 2001 plan and the overlay district is very prescriptive in how the building will look, when looking at that page seven in here for architectural standards, you have a requirement for architectural features for four-sided architecture, based on the size of the building, the back doesn't have to meet that, but the green gate and dolly roadside will, so that's very clear, the facade appearance requires every 50 feet to have offset and walk plane, that's very clear, when looking at the materials, the 2001 zoning code has the materials called out, excuse me, the 2001 zoning text has his materials called out, you know, for page eight, it doesn't permit any spander glass, and then the 2001 zoning text has a roofing standard, so this section doesn't apply, so the sections that are, this graphic here wasn't put together meeting chapter 1175, but the four items I just listed on pages seven and eight, the applicant acknowledges that they need to either adjust to meet it or ask for a variance during the final development plan later, the only items that have been contemplated by council this evening that aren't required to be adjusted is for materials, everything else that's highlighted in here, materials and roofing, everything else has been covered in the 2001 document, which is this on the screen.
Mr. Moore, will we see the final review of the building, or is that going to go to planning and zoning?
So the ordinance that approved the zoning text for green gates requires all final development plans to go to city council after a planning and zoning recommendation, however, that review is just acknowledging that the text is being met, because the plan is being established through this process.
So planning and zoning is just reviewing to make sure that it meets the standards, or you're saying that you would want-
You're reviewing, so during the final development, you're reviewing that the final plan is meeting the standards that are being discussed this evening?
Yep, we're at checkoff, so we wouldn't really have an opportunity to weigh in on the standard, like, you know, the materials that, I mean, Ms. Amick has, I think, your, is it Jerome, what did you say? Jerome Village? Jerome Village, the Jerome Village Kroger-
Jerome Township, Jerome Township.
Jerome Township, my apologies, Jerome Township Kroger, the materials that I'm seeing here, I'm not sure we would, are required if you just met the requirements, correct?
Which materials are you, because I don't know that we have provided a material board or anything, this is all, you know, integrated brick, it's a different color scheme for sure, so, but this is our goal, and we are also developing Jerome with a development partner, Nationwide Realty, there was a lot more going on there too, so.
Okay.
We want a beautiful building here, believe me, so we don't want to, and that's our intent.
We're going to hold you to that.
I would hope you would, my man.
Right now, it's metal and block, right?
That's not going to pass.
It's not block, it's not-
It's CMU, right?
No, we are not using, we are using integrated, they're half-high masonry units, it's integral colored, they're not, it's not concrete block that's being painted, that's not taking place at all. When you think of CMU, I think of gray CMU that's painted, like an Autozone or something.
I was looking at the materials list, then maybe I misunderstood, because I didn't see brick anywhere in the material list.
Well, they say concrete masonry units, I guess there's a broad definition, but we will make sure we have a materials board for you and we'll show you, but these are, these are integral colored brick, you know, utility brick units on the majority of the building, and there's going to be pilasters added in order to add that differential between the spacing that's going to be required by your code. The look of the building is changing quite a bit with the work that's being done between Moody Nolan, us, and your planning and zoning folks.
Do you believe that the architect has some sort of, just even a mock-up completed? Because I know you said you're moving on to other stores that he's designing.
Yeah, we've just, yeah, we've already made quite a few changes.
Are we able to see even a mock-up?
I don't have that with me tonight.
Yeah, I mean, are you able to send it to Mr. Moore?
Sure, we could probably send it.
That'd be lovely.
Yep.
I'm a very visual person, so I hear what you're saying, I see cinder block in my head, so I want to be able to just visualize what you mean by masonry and a different breakage.
Imagine a four-inch high by, it's brick, it's larger than brick, but it's brick, the whole building.
Really, like eight inches long?
It's, they're four by 12s, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this the, this is considered a market, this is going to be a marketplace? Is this the normal marketplace size, or is this a small version of a, it's the standard?
No, it's full marketplace, 124,000 square feet, the layout inside is going to be very similar, we are going with a brand-new decor package that will be in this building, so the decor that's used at Jerome Village will be different, but the layout's very, very similar from the vestibule throughout the building, there is a liquor store at Jerome, there will not be a liquor store here, as far as I know at this point, unless we get a pin drop, which we're hoping for, but at this point, there's not a liquor store inside, but other than that, it would look identical inside.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, at this time, thank you both very much.
You're very welcome, thank you.
At this time, I'll offer again, if there's any public comment, I don't see anyone new that's joined the gallery, okay. Okay, anything further for council discussion? Okay, hearing none, is there a move to adjourn the public hearing?
Some move.
Say it.
Motion made by Mrs. Amick, second by Mr. McLaughlin, roll call please.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Thank you, does anyone need a break?
Just like one minute.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll begin our council work session. Good evening.
Fish.
This is the Canal Winchester City Council work session for Monday, June 2nd, 2025, roll call please.
Ms. Amick?
Present.
Ms. Amick?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Busker?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
I'm here.
Thank you, also in attendance this evening, we have Mayor Steger, we have city administrator Matt Peoples sitting in for Lucas Hare, we have Andrew Moore, finance director Amanda Jackson, law director Thad Bobbs, and I'd like to welcome the Canal Winchester summer intern Diego Foyu, so welcome. All right, moving on to requests for council action, the first item is resolution 25-029, clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to establish the registration fee for the Safety City program.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
I'm actually going to hand this over to Ms. Woodruff.
Okay, Ms. Woodruff, please.
Hello, welcome, everybody, it's good to see you, so I wanted to just come here today to talk about our Safety City program that we are hoping to launch the first week of August, we're working with local police, fire, and other organizations to do, it's sort of like a camp, if you want to think of it that way, where kids will come every morning for a couple hours to learn about pedestrian safety, bike safety, you know, all sorts of different safety topics, it's attended for kids entering kindergarten, we're limiting it to just about 50 students, hopefully we'll be able to pull some off a waitlist to expand it a little bit, but it'll be a very small group, at least for our first year, and so this resolution today is going to set the fee for that, which we are keeping at $25, hopefully a reasonable price for the kiddos, doesn't even begin to cover the expenses of the program, but will at least help us a little bit that way.
Thank you very much, I like this idea, so, council discussion?
What are the expenses for it?
So the initial year one, I have, based on actually 75 kids, we expect it to cost about $9,300, not including staff expenses, and then annually it'll cost about two grand, so- not including uh staff expenses. Um and then annually, it'll cost about two grand. Uh so uh obviously, the initial expense covers some of the materials that we need to purchase, such as a mock city tarp that we have purchased, um some bikes, road signs, things like that. Um and then every year, uh we intend to give every kid a backpack, a helmet, um a T-shirt, uh and then just general program supplies and things to help with paper, whatever it might be.
Who is the um like um I don't know how to ask. Who is the administrator of the program? Is it Fairfield County Sheriff's Office? Is it local experts or oh, okay?
Yeah, so.
Local expert.
Local expert. Yes, uh safety expert over here. And so um that's why we're partnering with our local municipal, or excuse me, our local um law enforcement. So Fairfield County will have a presence, Madison Township Police and Fire have a presence. Uh and then we will have some uh guest appearances every week as well, or every day as well, which will include uh South Central Power to talk about home safety, things like that. Um ODNR will come and do a a presentation on outdoor safety. Uh and then actually, Columbus Pool Management will be helping us as well to talk about water safety, things like that.
And you said this is just for kindergartners, or you have that's the minimum age to start?
No, it's intended for kids going into kindergarten. So um Safety City, or Safety Town, as it's called in other municipalities, um it's a it is a program that a lot of areas do, and uh what part of the goal is to teach kids that are about to go to school, sort of what that classroom environment looks like, uh helps to give the parents a little bit of a test. Uh here's your kid going away for a couple hours. Uh how does this feel? Uh so it really helps with all of that. And I forgot to mention, we're partnering with the schools too to do bus safety.
Okay.
That's an important one.
Is there a like program for older kids, like say when they get to be third grade, fourth grade?
Um not that I have seen. Um I know some programs will open this up, or some municipalities will open this up to kindergarten or first grade, but it really um they keep it very basic just for that kindergarten grade.
I was just thinking, like in third and fourth grade, moms are starting to let their kids ride their bike down the street unattended, that sort of thing. So, okay. Something else from council? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to move this to full council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Woodruff, for putting that together. The next item is Resolution 25 dash zero three zero. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Susan Potter to serve on the Street Tree Advisory Board.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples?
Uh thank you with the um resignation of of Mrs. Note. Uh we had an opening. We published that out there, asked for applications. Uh we received four of those. Uh two of them did not live in the city limits, and the other two, um uh Mr. Miller, Urban Forestry, and Mr. Starcher at Public Service, uh reviewed the two applications and uh suggested on Mrs. Potter uh for the the appointment. Uh we included her application in there. She does have uh quite a bit with the uh education with the Ohio or in education at Ohio State. Um I think Mr. Miller has worked with her before on on some previous projects. Uh so he's familiar with that and uh was a resounding um recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peoples. Council discussion? Okay, hearing none. Is there a request to move to full council?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. Moore. Roll call, please.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is Ordinance 25 dash zero one three. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend section 905.02 of the codified ordinances of the City of Canal Winchester related to maintenance responsibility for areas abutting streets, alleys, and public ways of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Boggs?
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. Uh this ordinance proposed uh would sort of take some ambiguity out of the responsibility that exists for who is responsible for maintaining the right-of-way adjacent to properties. It has been the practice and tradition in at least the state of Ohio, as far as I can tell, for, you know, time immemorial, uh for people to mow the grass next to their property, even if it is technically owned by the city. Uh but there was a question about the origin of that, and that origin seems to have been lost in the mists of time. And so rather than uh go through those mists, it was easy enough just to put together an ordinance to take care of that and make it clear that lawn responsibilities, as well as responsibility for keeping um sidewalks clear and the right-of-way rests with the adjacent property owner.
Thank you. Council discussion? Mr. Boggs, just the word the in the text, it talks about the word rubbish. Can you define how the law sees rubbish? Would that include broken-down cars?
Typically, it would not. Uh it would be yeah, things like yard waste, sort of
Tires?
detritus, yeah.
Okay. Trash, essentially?
Trash.
Okay. Anything else from council? Thank you. Is there a motion to move Ordinance 25 dash zero one three to full council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Amick, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us to Ordinance 25 dash zero one four. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance approving and adopting the 2026 tax budget.
Thank you. Mrs. Jackson?
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. Um this is on for first reading only this evening in order to get the three readings in before your July recess and the required filing date of July 20th. I am going to do a full-blown presentation at your next council meeting. Um I didn't want to bog down tonight's agenda, knowing that you had a public hearing. So we will do a separate public hearing on this where I will go through it in more detail. But this will also give you the opportunity to um review, and if you have questions between now and the next meeting, I would be happy to answer them. Um otherwise, again, just on for first reading this evening um to allow for three readings before adoption.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Is the uh is that the public here? Okay, on June 16th. Okay, thank you. Yes. Uh council discussion? Okay, the chair will move to uh move Ordinance 25 dash zero one four to full council.
Second.
Motion made by Amick, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is Ordinance 25 dash zero one five. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 52 dash zero one to adopt the revised preliminary development plan for the Green Gate Plaza development, a part of the original Pfeiffer Property Zone PCD.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Moore?
Um I don't have anything else to add beyond the public hearing, unless there's any additional questions from City Council on um what the preliminary development plan is actually approving versus a subsequent final development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any further discussion from council?
I just want to be clear on one thing. I think you just said it again, but if we move this on, vote on it, then basically, the rest of the plan is out of our hands, because then all we can say is it's checking the current codes box.
Yeah, so Mr. Moore, I would ask that when as soon as you get their their semi mock-up, that if you could send that out to us for review, that'd be awesome. Because I'd hope that we would have that with at least a week to digest before the next meeting. Saying as we'll have first read tonight, and then they're going to ask us to vote on it at the next meeting.
So a couple clarifications. Um first, Mr. Moore, the um preliminary development plan is approving and affirming all the standards. So the final development plan is checking the boxes, as you as you said, assuring all those standards have been met. Um Ms. Amick, I did talk with the applicant um after the public hearing closed. Um they hopeful to get me in touch with the architect to get the additional information, um knowing that I'm going to send it to you guys as soon as possible. Um the um and just as a clarification, the standards, whether it's adopted as approved or previously approved, or as amended based on like speci- specificities on what the applicant provides, applies to entire 17.9 acres, not just Kroger's that wants to come in the future. So just be cognizant that the preliminary plan is for the entire tract of land. It's hard to ignore that Kroger's is the applicant. They announced themselves, it's all their application, but that's not what is being proposed. And what's being proposed is how to develop on that 17.9 acre piece of ground.
And I think the applicant would, unfortunate part is the applicant is also the end user, right? I think um again, my continued push would be for the applicant to include some appearance standards in this document before I adopt it.
Understood.
Mr. Boggs, welcome back.
Thank you.
Is there a way, when we're going through this ordinance, that we can modify the language? So and rather than it coming back for a check the box, so to say, it turns into a final approval from this body?
I would not advise doing that. Um but what you can do is, in the consideration of the preliminary plan, you know, there there are standards, as Mr. Moore pointed out, and as the council observed, that it seems that the current preliminary plan does not meet. And so if those are to be accommodated by an approval, then there may be an opportunity for conditions that council can find uh support for, to be included in that preliminary plan, and then come back for a final.
Do you want me to unalloyer that for you?
I would say don't change your
Exactly what you said in the last meeting.
Don't change your procedure just for one application.
Unless, no, we don't have to change the the procedure, but we certainly, to your point, if this is just a, we looked at it, we affirmed that what we're looking at is the thing, we could, we always have the opportunity to waive readings. We don't have to make it go through readings. You could pass it on one reading.
The preliminary?
No.
No, the final?
The final, because I thought your question was, final development plan, if it's just checking the box, why do I have to check the box?
No, my mine was actually, let's was to change the ordinance so that for this particularly project, that the final development plan would have to come back through, not for a box check, before a up-down vote, which but listening to council, that's a really bad idea, because it deviates process and probably not makes sense. But it was just, thanks for answering.
And that and that's why I think you want to get it in the upfront.
Absolutely.
Right.
And then we don't have to deviate that process, and we then would just be checking the box at the final review, and we would have the opportunity to waive all the other readings, and we could speed everything. I mean, if we are amenable to helping uh Kroger get their site broken this year, um then, you know, a final site plan review could just be one reading.
But there's still three readings on the preliminary.
I would
They're requesting two.
Currently.
Well, and I would, as a fellow member of the body, I mean, I have vacation scheduled for the next meeting, so I appreciate it if you didn't waive that third reading, because I'd still like to take a look at it. But if you do, that's part of being part of a body. I'll be all right.
Well, right now, the procedure would say that there are three readings.
All right. Motion to?
Okay. So is there a motion to move Ordinance 25 dash zero one five to full council?
Sure, sure. I'm going to move Ordinance 25 zero one five to full council.
Second.
I like the big ones.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
The big projects, yeah.
Motion made by Mr. Bennett, second by uh Mr. Moore, to move Ordinance 25 zero one five to full council. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Just move it to full.
Okay. That's an affirmative.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amick? Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to old and new business, the Charter Review Commission recommendations, OTH 25 dash zero one two. Coming out of our last meeting, there were uh there was a request for a uh some work to be done around logical grouping, and those topics that were perhaps more sensitive or more complex from those that were not. And I think um some work has been done. Mr. Peoples?
Yeah, we're we're still working with that. Mr. Shamp uh in in Mr. Boggs' office has has been working on that. We we do have some, or we plan on having this at the uh at the June committee of the whole uh to to review all of them.
Okay.
Uh there's a lot of procedural stuff in there that is just very, very very simple, um that we don't want to have bogged down everything else with.
Okay, thank you. We will leave that. Um the Charter Review Commission requirements or recommendation on the old business list. Um council, do you have any other old or new business that?
Just a just a quick one. Um our annual message about solicitors went out uh on our Facebook.
Thank you.
Of course, 'tis the season. Um it happens every year, drives everybody nuts every year. We have a lot of people that don't follow the process. Um I I think there's a lot of confusion on residents, whether they have the, you know, have the permission or not. I know they're supposed to carry that on, and a lot of people say, oh, we have the permission, we just don't have that with us, or we don't need it with us. Is there a way just to add, when someone's approved, just a little, something on the website that can be checked that says, hey, these are, these are vendors approved?
Uh we do have that on the webpage. So if you go to the Do Knock Knock page, it'll say, these businesses or vendors are currently permitted to solicit, and you can see that list of who is or who isn't.
Learned something new today.
Currently, there is not anyone.
Yeah, I saw that on the message.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson, still the one who signs those, so that we know whose signature to be looking for?
Yes.
Outstanding.
Mr. Moore, my experience has been, because I think nowadays coming here, we get a lot of them. And usually, that's the first thing that comes out of my mouth, is may I see your permit?
Mm-hmm.
And nine times out of 10, they'll say, oh, it's in my car. I'll go get it. And then I never see from them again. So really, instead of, if you want to take the time to go look at the website and all that, but the easiest thing for me has been just saying, can I see your permit? And then I never hear from them again.
I just called the sheriff.
Make sure when you ask them to see their permit, that you ask them to see their Canal Winchester permit.
Yes, yes.
Be very specific with them, because some will try and say, oh, I have a permit, and it'll be from another municipality or whatever, so.
My favorite is
Be very specific.
My supervisor passed that. We don't get a copy. I'm like, oh, well, then send your supervisor.
Yes, they do. Everybody who has a valid one will have one with their picture on it.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. The the last solicitor I had, they pulled out a stack of credit card size, and they went through them, and they're like, I'm sure I've got a Canal Winchester one, but they couldn't produce it. So thank you for that reminder. Um, anything else? Mr. Shay?
I don't know if this is old business or new business, but previously, we had talked about a better way to give panhandling signs. And I just wanted to get an update on that, because it's, things have really settled down at Winchester Square and the other other back, other Castro place, but boy, over by the new crosswalk, um it is.
The payware cars.
It is. And I've seen people like stopping the flow of traffic to go onto 33 to hand that person a dollar, and I want to just yell, but I can't.
The spinning of the signs, the bicycle that's too close to the, that people are getting annoyed and trying to drive around. It's like a weekly occurrence, people complaining, because now they're dancing and waving and spinning signs there and.
Oh, yeah. And I guess the Kroger people are back.
Kroger people are back.
The ones that were there last year, but I mean, that's a simple call, because there's signs still.
Okay.
Are the spinning signs commercial advertisements, or are they panhandling?
They're the panhandlers.
Okay.
They're spinning them and dancing around. This is the last person that called me.
I mean, that's a good show.
So we we do have a the website ready to go, um and I'd have to check with Mr. Starcher tomorrow uh on the signs
Thank you.
to link to that.
Really appreciate it.
Yep. Yep.
Are we doing the QR code? Is that what we ended up saying?
Correct, and it'll, which will go to our website.
So we just need to also make sure that nobody stickers over our QR codes on occasion. Thank you.
We gave a stack of Canal Winchester Human Services brochures to the local sheriff's department for them to carry in their cars in case they do have someone who is panhandling, that they could also give them one of those, so. I have an item that, unfortunately, it's a repeat complaint, and I kind of want to know if there are any current violations for the Hartman's auto body. The complaint that council received an email on was relative to the backside of the property, but I drove by the other day, and I know that there are, there are not, I think, that there are not violations if they're not on the sidewalk, but when I drove by the other day, there was a very large truck, and the wheels of the truck were actually on the sidewalk. So I don't know who can best speak to that, but again, we, this is kind of a continued complaint cycle.
Mm-hmm.
So, Mr. Peoples, can you speak to that?
Sure.
Thank you.
We've been in contact with them numerous times over the last couple of years, really. It gets better, and then it just goes away a little bit. There is a current enforcement action with, in parking in general, specifically over the sidewalks. I think I heard sixty-eight parking tickets.
That's awful.
That's a lot of parking tickets have been issued. They actually ran out of parking tickets, but the, those have been mainly in residential areas based on multiple complaints that the sheriff's department has received. Sergeant Strawn, there's, there's a minor issue that we have to work out tomorrow on the Hartmans, but that was with, my, my position is if we're doing it to residents, it'll go there. The unfortunate part is that we will, if, to enforce that, we will ticket the vehicle, which will go to the owner of the vehicle, not to Hartmans. Now, I'm sure that the owners of those vehicles will not be very happy, but it is a ticketed on the vehicle.
And then-
And which is some of the issue that we're running into.
Thank you. The, the actual complaint that we just got yesterday, I believe it was, was actually also referencing the backside of the property with broken down cars and whatnot. Are those, are there also violations in the backside of the property?
The, I was copied on that email as well. It seemed to be that it's blocking the alley, and I think it's just general frustration of the, of the people who live and work in that area, that, that not only is the sidewalk like that, and then if a, there's, it used to be that the, the delivery trucks used to pull one out front, they would unload, and then they would go, with everything being blocked in the front with all the vehicles. Now they're going around back and unloading in the back and blocking the road out there. Now, over the years, we've been requested to make that one way. One of the biggest problems is which way do we put that? There is, everyone has their own opinions based on, on where they live or work, on how to get out of there, so we did keep it two ways. However, again, I think it's just a general frustration that, you know, there, there is all that activity from the front now spilling over the back, someone has to go. There is an ordinance that says that parking in alleys is permitted for loading and unloading only, and it is a half an hour. I was a little bit surprised with that. I don't know how long that's been on the books, but it is in the code that way. That's possibly something that we want to look into. You know, I don't know how many other, I don't know what the, the law of unintended consequences are, and that is what that, what else is that's going to affect, so kind of monitoring that.
Okay, thank you. Is there a, Mr. Boggs, is there like a, an escalation once you've hit a certain number of violations? Is, you said there were, I'm sorry, sixty-eight?
This is throughout town.
Oh, throughout town.
Yeah, throughout town.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
Mr. Peoples, is the gated property behind Hartman, is that also their property?
I believe so, yes.
Because I know I've driven past there, and it's been empty at the time when there's lots of cars out there, so that's why I didn't know if it belonged to them or not.
That used to be employee parking at one point, in the past, but-
Is it, is it now full of abandoned car or junk cars? I mean, that's, that's how I read the email.
Cars waiting to be fixed.
My understanding is that, that fenced-in lot on the north side of the alley is owned by the same property owner, but is not being leased to Hartmans.
Okay, because like I said, when I've driven past, it was pretty much empty, and I thought, well, that would be a good place to store some of the vehicles.
So is that appearance issue?
And the other shoe?
If it's full of-
No, it's full.
The other thing about the alley is, is when you turn into that alley, before you turn into that alley from either angle, you can see down to the three-quarters of the way and tell if there's a car there, because I've done that before and gone, nope, got, just turn around, somebody's using the alley, that's what it's there for, so, I mean.
And again, and I agree with that, and that's why it's two-way, but again, the general frustration, I, I understand, is, because it's just been, they, it's constant issues there.
That's why I'm asking, is because I'm not trying to create trouble, it's just, are there actual violations in what's happening, so. I have one more item, and I'm going to look to Mayor Steger, because if he's going to just, if he's going to talk about this, I'll back off. The meeting with Columbus leaders, are you gonna?
You can do that.
Okay. I want to thank Mayor Steger for inviting a few of us to join him with a meeting with some of Columbus's leaders. We met with the deputy director, these are leaders out of Mayor Ginter's office, and a gentleman in charge of regional partnerships, and I was encouraged by the meeting. Basically, the meeting was, how can we partner together? We're now neighbors, our, our borders are touching each other, and as we all know, there's a tremendous amount of growth happening in the Columbus area around us. So I want to thank Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Bennett for also coming along with that. I don't want to go in, I won't go into too many layered details, but some of the actions that they said that I took away were, they are adding technologies to assist with some of the crime-related activity, things like flop cameras as an example. They have three new classes of cadets, so that's also encouraging. There is still a, a desire for patrol men and women. I thought that was good. They are reworking the district lines to determine their cruiser allotment. None of this is fully baked yet, but these are things that they're pursuing. The flop cameras I just mentioned, and then they have a, an Office of Violence Prevention, and they're trying to get that teed up so that, one of the charts that they showed us, showed a significant number of domestic violence incidents that the Columbus Police Department has responded to, and so they're working on this Office of Violence Promotion to help with some of the best practices and ways to offset that.
Prevention, not promotion.
Prevention, yes. Thank you. I'm sure somebody would be like, what? So thank you, Mayor Steger, for coordinating that meeting. I found it to be very productive. I feel encouraged that, you know, contrary to what we may have heard, they really do, at least I walked away with the feeling like they really do want to be good partners in this space we all call home, so thank you. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
I guess I would just add that, you know, it is encouraging, you know, before, I think, you know, we were maybe a little more, we weren't putting as much effort into outreach to building a relationship with Columbus, and I think, you know, you can see that that's, you know, you can see Mayor Steger's put a lot of effort into that, he's building a relationship that, this was not his first interaction, he's, he's had multiple interactions. It was encouraging to see, you know, the Zone Five, maybe, commander and Sergeant Strawn exchanging information and building a rapport to be able to share information back and forth on a consistent basis, so that, you know, the, the things that we are feeling on the southeast side will, you know, there's sort of now a way to approach it, so, you know, just, I just want to echo, just encouraging to see us, you know, sort of extending a hand and reaching across that border to kind of help pull them down and, and build a relationship here, so that was a very encouraging meeting. Thank you for setting that up, for building the relationship.
I thought it would never happen. Good job.
Yep. Good meeting.
Too bad.
Motion to adjourn.
Semi-annual meeting.
Second.
Third.
A motion made by Mr. Bennett, and second by Mr. Sche for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sche?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes. No respect, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Next up will be our Canal Winchester City Council meeting. Mr. Bennett, do you want to take a break, or are you ready to go?
Five.
Okay.
We just have five.
We just have five.
You're gonna have five more, two and a half.
Okay, council will begin at seven thirty-five.
Four.
I've got bricks and walls in my. Good evening, everyone. This is a call to order for the Canal Winchester June 2nd, 2025 City Council meeting. Leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening will be Mr. Busker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Amis?
Present.
Ms. Amis?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Busker?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Shay?
Present.
That'll lead us to the approval of minutes. I have minutes 25-019. This is the May 19th, 2025 work session meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Some move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Busker. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Stay.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes. Next, we have minutes 25-020. This is the minutes from the May 19th Canal Winchester City Council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
The whole meeting floor's gonna be thrown off. Motion by Mr. Busker, second by Ms. Amis. Any discussion? Other than how?
Nope.
Roll call.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Upstate.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Hit the cycle on the last one. It was great. All right. Just for those joining us this evening. So basically, approval of minutes is basically just us approving that the capturing of the record from our last meeting is accurate, and we had no changes to the formal documentation. Next item on our agenda is communications and petitions. Again, we get to have, we've broken this up, so now we get another Dr. Bender Scholarship Award winner joining us this evening. So, come on down. So, our second award winner for the Bender Scholarship is Malia Williams. Ms. Williams was selected as a member of the Canal Winchester community to receive this scholarship based on her numerous academic achievements, community service, and leadership roles. She intends to pursue a post-secondary education at the Ohio State University to get a degree in nursing. She has a cumulative GPA of 4.144, which I thought 4, it was like, all right, next level. Her letters of recommendation describe her as a resilient, empathetic, she has this rare ability to connect with people, whether she's mentoring younger students or collaborating with peers, that she approaches every interaction with genuine kindness. She describes her goals as to really to achieve a degree in nursing and really to help enhance the community well-being of those around her. So, we're excited to congratulate you on this award and the, on the 25, 2025 Dr. Bender Scholarship. So, congratulations. Also, congratulations, Mom and Dad.
She's also served us really well as our current queen.
That's right. This is Miss Canal Winchester.
And I did see she just got a South Central Scholarship as well.
Racking up love.
What a girl.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dad. Probably the most fun we'll have tonight.
Congratulations.
All right, that'll bring us to public comment. If anyone here this evening has public comment, feel free to do that now.
Now.
Seeing that we have no public comment this evening, we will move on to reports of city officials and staff, and we'll lead off with Mayor Steger's report.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I just wanted to add to Ms. Amick's report on the City of Columbus that that is going to be a biannual meeting. So, we're gonna meet with them one more time again this year. And as I emailed you guys, I wanted to report that the flock cameras are all up and running now, and we're sharing all that information with all surrounding entities. So, that's all I have for this evening.
I enjoyed Patrick's response to that. Was it your response?
Yeah.
About the criminals?
Oh, well, you know.
They're for.
Who played all of us? He said that he felt bad for the criminals because now the cameras are unused.
It's gonna make it harder.
It's gonna make it harder. That was a justification.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Mayor Steger? If none, we'll move to city administrator report, Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Just a couple of updates from my written report. I unfortunately received a call today from Representative Carey's office. We were not successful in the grant for the Headworks project. They had, they typically have 15 slots available for grants. It was limited to five this year, and unfortunately, we did not make the cut. So, but we are continuing to work. We have some engineering, value engineering ideas that we have. One of them is, one of the biggest ones is the storage barn that we're looking to delete out of the project. That's about a $2 million cost for that. That is something we are looking for, towards removing, but at some point in the future, we will need storage space. So, just, it might just come at a later date. So, and that would probably be more from a village-wide, citywide standpoint, excuse me, rather than the, just the wastewater looking at that.
Time travel a little bit there, huh? Time travel a little bit.
Little bit, yeah, yeah. Old habits.
And the city's got land where we can do that at in the future. We don't need to acquire new land?
It depends on what our needs are gonna be. You know, we've floated some ideas about at McGill Park in the Phase 3 section, or actually acquiring something. So, if that is a possibility, we'd have to acquire.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Peoples? Hearing none, we'll move to Fairfield County Sheriff's report.
Sorry, I'm late. I have a couple calls.
Right on time. Right on time.
Strawn says he's in the, you know, he could be here. Nothing on the report. He said I have this report for me, and then just about the flock cameras, Danny said they're all up for me now, so. They've had some success.
Yeah, he told me this morning that one of you guys got a warrant, like, was that you that got that? They, they got it popped up, went and found it. And then.
So, they're working.
That's awesome.
Thank you for all you do. All right.
Well done. Thank you.
Mission accomplished. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Debbie Franklin.
We'll move to Law Director's report. Mr. Barnes.
Nothing new to report to council this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hearing no questions from council. We will move to Finance Director report. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. So, the mother nature hasn't been very cooperative with the pool opening. It has been open a couple of days, but the weather is still very cool. Unfortunately, we have had some unruly behavior that we are going to address. One instance happened this evening, so if you do hear about anything, we're still in the midst of gathering information about what happened, but we will address that tomorrow when we are back in the office. So, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Hearing none, we will move to Development Director report. Filling in for Mr. Hare tonight is Mr. Moore. Any updates, Mr. Moore?
Mr. Hare did not have any report to provide, but I'm here to answer any questions council has for me.
Any questions for Mr. Moore?
I think we've given him enough questions today.
Yeah, I feel like we really contributed with questions tonight.
Great job, as always. Thank you.
All right, then we will move to resolutions. We have first resolution for this evening. We have Resolution 25-029. Clerk, could you read the resolution?
A resolution to establish the registration fee for the Safety City program.
Thank you. The sponsor of that is Mr. Moore.
A motion to adopt Resolution 25-029.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Amick. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Thank you. Second resolution this evening is Resolution 25-030. Clerk, could you read this resolution?
A resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Susan Potter to serve on the Street Tree Advisory Board.
Thank you. The sponsor for that was Mr. Busker.
I move to adopt Resolution 25-030. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes. Thank you. Next is the reading of third ordinances, first third ordnance, third readings. Ordinance 25-011. Ms. Pierce, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Part 11 of the codified ordinances in the zoning map of the City of Canal Winchester, rezoning approximately 25.87 acres of land from planned residential district to planned residential district owned by the Pawpaw Patch LLC, located at 7995 Hill Road and consisting of one parcel, PID 042-03885-10, and to adopt a preliminary development plan and development text for a proposed 25.87 acre planned residential district.
Thank you. The sponsor is Mr. Moore.
Motion to adopt ordinance 25-001.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shay. Discussion.
Mr. Moore, has there been any, any additional, any additional changes from the previous meeting?
So, the applicant this evening does have a brief presentation to provide to city council, going over the changes they've made since, or going over the plans since the last meeting to staff's knowledge there is no changes being presented, but the applicant, I think, can clarify that with their presentation with you this evening.
Okay. I believe Mr. Kulik is here to make that presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here again. Just wanted to kind of reiterate a couple items, kind of touch base on a few items that maybe needed some clarification. We've been working with planning staff, planning commission, CETA, and city council now since July of 2024, this recently and weeks ago, myself or our VP Development have reached out to city council members as a group and individually to solicit some feedback. Several requests have been made from all parties regarding site layout and architecture, which we've complied with virtually all of them. So, I want to go through here. Oops.
Turn it on on the side.
Okay. Yeah, got it. There we go.
Can you make it full screen, Jordan?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The one right next to the presentation. Now I got them.
Hold on. First one's gonna start over.
They're covering the version of Microsoft.
Fair enough. All right.
Hold on.
I don't know why it's doing this tonight.
We're not judging.
Busker can judge.
Judge by the measure with which you've been judged.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, so, this is kind of just, it's similar to what I sent in the email this past week. These are kind of all the items we've worked with various parties on. I'm not gonna read these verbatim. A couple of things I do want to reiterate, just because I know that they're important to city council. The second bullet point on the left, we are enhancing the rear elevations along Hill Road. So, there's going to be additional brickstone railing, decorative column wrap, and these were recommendations per CETA. So, there's gonna be a total of, I believe, five buildings that back up to Hill Road that are going to have enhanced elevations. And then the other thing I'd like to reiterate is that all sixplex, all sixplex buildings will be broken up by the two-story component in the middle of the building. So, I believe I, no, I did not. I'm sorry. So, what that is basically saying is we're trying to, I guess, remove the barracks feeling. So, we don't want, we're not trying to have a all contiguous roofline. So, we feel like that by having that two-story component in the middle, that is breaking up that roofline. And then here's something I wanted to reiterate, because it got brought up last meeting about the colors. So, here's the color schemes that were, you know, something similar to this. There's gonna be five different color schemes, including the clubhouse. And then here as well, the different architectural elements that will be on each building, so that each building does not look exactly the same. So, quick conclusion. As I stated before, this meets the vision of the 2001 preliminary development plan, satisfies the goals of the 2023 comprehensive plan, and it follows the modern standards, standards in the zoning code. Something I want to reiterate is the current zoning here has no architecture, density, or open space requirements. So, with this rezoning, this is holding us to, I guess, stricter, better standards. And then we feel this is a reasonable, non-intense development that will provide a sufficient buffer to the industrial uses. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Kulik, were you missing a slide here?
Yeah, I was. I wanted to show the rear elevations, I wanted to show the elevations of the sixplexes and of the rear. I'm not sure what happened, so.
If we give you a minute, could you dig that up? I think that.
Yeah.
It's kind of a key.
Yeah, sure. Hold on a second. If I email it to you, would you be able to? Okay. Sorry about that.
Are we on the list or where's?
You're on the list. I'm just confirming that you're both gonna be there. Okay. 21st, Saturday. Nine to 10. Okay. We can maybe exchange texts. Who's bringing the minutes?
I'm talking about my minutes.
Are you?
Yeah. You're a sweet guy.
I am.
The intent was to. Actually, the last time I had council meeting, I went up and grabbed some.
What's your?
Really?
Yeah.
But I brought, I brought boxes of glaze.
Is that one for money?
Yeah. No, just to make sure.
My favorite, just in case you care.
You're exchanging your favorite.
Yeah. Honey Cruller. I love Honey Cruller. You'll notice. It's like a, it's like a glaze. Here you go. That's Honey Cruller. That's Honey Cruley.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Attractive.
Sorry about that. She's going to pull up the PDF here quickly.
Thank you.
Yep. I guess while she's pulling that up, I'd just like to reiterate also that we have unanimous planning commission support and planning staff support as well. Okay, so here, this top, this first page here is the Hill Road. So this is the, what you see here as the top, sorry, what you see on the top there is the rear of the units. And then on the front, you see, obviously the front. But I guess what I'm trying to point out here is that the rooflines are broken up by that two-story component in the middle. So it's not all one flat roof. And then on the next page here. And then, yep, and then this will be the internal buildings. So these will only be visible for our, you know, internal residents. And then from, you won't be able to see these because of the large buffers on the north and the east and the south side. That's all I wanted to point out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Thank you for bringing that.
Yep.
Mr. Bullock, I know you said you made an attempt to reach members of council. I know you replied to my email and unfortunately, my reply to you sits in my giraffes because I did not have time to get together in advance of this vote tonight. And I apologize. I ended up working a lot of the weekend. I don't know if you made, or if other council members had an opportunity to respond to Mr. Kulik or desired any additional feedback to provide to Mr. Kulik.
Did receive a couple of responses, just asking some questions or for clarification.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion from council?
I just feel like this is a very important project, a very big deal, and I feel like I just don't know that it's been presented that way from the get-go. I know it's important to our residents, the decision we make on this.
I don't disagree. I guess I'll fill the silence with my own. I don't disagree with you. I think, you know, our last project, we had an opportunity to pause and maybe discuss a little bit. You know, I don't feel like we've necessarily had an opportunity to sit down offline and really sort of hash out some of the more nuanced details here for this project. With that said, you are at third reading, and by our own rules, we are obligated to vote unless you or Stark requests postponement for an opportunity to have more conversation. But again, that is not for us to decide. Obviously, that is you as the applicant's decision.
I mean, I'll apologize. I didn't need to. School's ending, so my world is like complete chaos the last few weeks of the school year. So I didn't have a chance to talk with you. I think Mr. Bennett's being very kind in saying, this seems like we went from dorm rooms to a little better dorm rooms. I'm still not sure for me that it works to the point where I would say this is a Canal Winchester package. This is something I want my residents to be proud of, and that I'm willing to sell them. My person, again, we're at third read. I'll certainly vote for you tonight, but I
You'll vote. You used the word for.
I would vote. Correct. I would vote tonight. But I still, I'm not to the point where I would present this to my community and say I'm a hundred percent behind it. Just being honest. Like, I feel like you guys have made some movement towards that. Still feel like it's very commercially like
Read the leaves, boys.
You certainly can. And again, I don't, I guess, let me
I'm one of seven.
Let me take a step and just say, Mr. Bullock, you highlighted a lot of things that Stark has already done to express commitment to wanting to be in the city. And I don't think that that falls on deaf ears. But at the same point, I still feel like the body may not be a hundred percent yet there yet. But, and I apologize, I did not have a chance to meet you prior to the meeting. But please, if you don't mind introducing yourself.
Brian Midlick, I was here two weeks ago as well.
Are you?
Yeah.
Did you have a client?
Nope.
There you go.
You know, understand the point. For us, you know, we've been working, as Mr. Kulik expressed, with staff.
Yep.
Even prior to the submission process, I think we've reached out to every one of you to, you know, solicit all of the comments we've received throughout the process from the readings. We've responded to above and beyond the things that we did above and beyond what was required in the ordinances. Literally every single one of them, you know, the six twelve roof, even though we didn't think the, you know, we completely eliminated a hundred percent of the vinyl from the project, right? So, you know, there's a lot of things that have added significant cost. I think I mentioned to you guys last time, and it's a bullet point. And with what Jason said, the, you know, bigger buffers, right? Those have large impacts on the density here. So, you know, the elevations you're looking at here that, you know, face, that's vinyl, right? I'm not sure this reads so well in a rendering, or it's not even an elevation, a colored elevation. There's articulation. Those garages, you know, sit proud of those doors, sit proud of those windows. So there's a lot of articulation that I don't think is shown in what you see in those, these two-dimensional elevations. You know, so for us, we've been, you know, trying to work with you guys for many, many weeks. We understand challenging schedules and everything else, but we have reached out and solicited feedback every single time. And you know, to hear that this still doesn't do, or to hear that, you know, we don't, the project or doesn't feel the presence, the importance of the project, you know, hasn't been conveyed. Is that an issue from us that we weren't, you know, putting forward the effort to, you know, do all the different steps? Go through the process, meet with staff, go through planning. You know, we've done everything we possibly can to this point, you know, to get to the third reading, which is a requirement. To hear that, you know, becomes challenging for us.
I appreciate that. I really do. I feel like for me, and again, as Mrs. Amos always says, I'm just one of seven. To me, this feels architecturally bland. And we're a community that if you have read or followed any of the history of our community, our residents expect beauty. They expect architectural details that I know that, you know, you've checked off, you know, you've checked the list. This is not going to be very helpful to you, but I feel like it's the product for me. And I feel like the product lacks love. It doesn't, it just feels very manufactured to me. So that's kind of how I feel about the product. I appreciate the fact that you have done, you know, you've met with staff and you've worked to meet as many of the responses that you've been able to digest and receive. I do appreciate that. But, so I don't know if that's helpful or not, but that's kind of how I feel about the product.
Well, I'd just like to add, it feels like it took till the third read for us to get to where we should have probably started at. Does that make sense? Then we could have, and we talked about communication. I mean, and again, I didn't get a chance to talk to you in the last week. But outside of speaking to you guys six months ago, I haven't had communication with you guys. And so if there was more communicate, we're just coming from a development that we approved, where the developer communicated thoroughly and went above and beyond to meet the demands of our residents. And we're at third reading, and we're just meeting the standard, is what it feels like. Does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying. I'm not sure what you mean, meeting the standard. I think there's a lot of things that go significantly above and beyond the standard in this
Hardy board?
The Hardy, right, is beyond what's required, right? Vinyl is an approved product, including the architectural requirements that are in the vinyl, you know, requirements. We kept that even with keeping the semitish, you know, siding there. So there's a lot of things that are above and beyond. I don't think we're just meeting and including buffers and everything else. And this process has started, you know, to Mr. Moore's credit, expressing some of the challenging things you guys have gone through. And, you know, I'm fairly certain before the six weeks ago, we've reached out to everybody to have these communications. So I do think there's been an effort to go beyond and have the communication and have the conversations. You know, I know that we had neighborhood information meetings. The mayor was at it. I think a few others showed up to the meeting to discuss it. So the conversations have been there for a while. I understand, maybe you guys are feeling like you're just getting there now. But for us, how much, it's hard to interpret what love means. It needs more love. It's hard to interpret that without hard facts, and we've been trying to
It's not a data point.
Do that for many weeks, beyond just the six weeks that we've been doing this. And again, to Mr. Moore's credit, and going through planning, you know, these have all been a part of the conversation, knowing that these things need to go above and beyond, and we've tried to do that, so.
So first, let me say that in your shoes, I would, I would, well, empathetic, I feel the same. I would probably have a sense of frustration in the fact that, of the amount of effort and time and the opportunities you've taken to try and consolidate the feedback. I would say, you know, at first reading, I think you heard feedback that, you know, this is a giant vinyl village. Outside of meeting with members of council to get feedback as a collective body, because Alex's feedback wouldn't be my feedback, isn't going to be Patrick's feedback. And so on that one note, we flipped out all the vinyl to Hardy Plank. You might have found out, well, how committed are the rest of all of council to Hardy Plank? Maybe we'd be okay with vinyl, but there's other substantive design changes that maybe needed to happen outside of that. And so I think what council is trying to express back is we feel like we just keep running to get to the third reading instead of maybe like, well, okay, you know, you heard us express concern at that first reading. But instead of pausing and sort of, you know, maybe heeding some advice and meeting with council members as groups to sort of head that off, we just made one change and assumed that Hardy Plank was the only change that needed to be made. That may or may not have been the case for some members of council. You know, if we proceed forward tonight, you'll know how many members of council it moved the needle for. So I guess the same feedback I sort of tried to provide Mr. Kulik, where again, I apologize, this isn't my full-time job, so I'm not a hundred percent available, which, you know, in a person in your position, is very challenging and maybe even frustrating, and I apologize. I am limited. But I do think you would benefit from meeting with council in groups and having a discussion before proceeding with a vote tonight. That's the only thing I can tell you. I don't, I haven't asked members of council. I just, I have a sense that, and again, I can only imagine the amount of time and money that that is going to cost Stark Enterprises. And I apologize that you are here today, and that is where we are. The alternative is, we proceed with a vote, and it may be even worse.
Well, don't we have a motion on the floor already?
We do.
The motion is on the floor, and I just, I know that there's some, you know, you said you weren't kind of sure what to do with some of the comments that were made from the dais. And I think specifically Mrs. Amick's about whether it had the sort of love that you were looking for. And I think that provides some, I guess I'll ask you sort of if I'm getting what you're saying, because I'm looking at the Plan District Code here and its purpose and intent. And it talks about, it's the intent of the Plan District, including Planned Residential District, to promote progressive development of land and construction thereon, to encourage imaginative architectural design and layout, flexibility in building styles and types, sensitivity for the natural environment. Plan districts are designed to guide development in an orderly, coordinated, comprehensive manner that preserves natural quality and beauty, and provide supportive community facilities and development of diverse, sound urban environments consistent with accepted land planning, landscape, architectural practices, and engineering principles. Like, that's what your code says the intent of this district is. Is that, I mean, in the interest of giving them something more concrete to react to, is that sort of what you're driving at?
That is absolutely the definition of love for this product. And it's not about the meetings and whatnot. It's about, for me, it's about the product itself. I don't feel meets, I think you use the words imagination of architectural designs or something like that. I don't see that here.
Yeah, I think like, there's been a lot of upgrades to the front of the buildings, but the back of the building still looks like it's a shopping center back. I mean, it's just plain lackluster. So that's, I think, the love for me is, and again, I think you nailed it when you said the design is not quite there. I see a lot of the changes that I wanted to see, that I, I mean, my council members have reflected in conversations that I've shared with them. So I see some of those things, but I still think there's some more work. I mean, school's out for me, so I have some more time to meet if you'd like to come meet next week. If you're willing. And if not, that's okay. It's your call. It's your baby.
Understood. One of the pieces of the love conversation in this is it's Mr. Bennett's comments about the vinyl versus Mr. Shea's comments about the vinyl, right? They're very different. So in architectural style, it's like being a chef, right? I may hate a cake, you may love a cake, right? So it's very challenging when we're trying to do it across seven different, and there's standards and there's code, right? And there's, to meet those codes, and we meet and exceed those codes. So again, it's, how do we consolidate that conversation to, this is one that we can all, which candidly is what we've been trying to do for a little while. Maybe we had to get to this point to have this part of the conversation. Is there a desire to do that? How do we do that so we can have a real conversation? There's a balancing act here, right? There's costs, the love, the product. I mean, we develop this product in a lot of places. We're achieving top market rents where we're doing it. It's well-received. It's a high-quality product. Again, you're looking at a two-dimensional elevation. It's a different animal. So how do you consolidate that conversation to be able to say, here's real feedback that we can all get behind together?
How much time did you guys spend driving around Canal Winchester? Did you go to our downtown area and drive through neighborhoods? And did you do, did you spend a lot of research time about the community?
I've been here on multiple occasions. Our team's been here on multiple occasions. We have architectural team, we have civil engineering team that all, you know, have different experiences. We just ate dinner in your downtown district here, so.
Sure.
Okay.
I think the feedback that I've expressed to Mr. Kulik, and I think, and I think I've kind of heard it from other council members as well, is just that this building by floor plan essentially is a block. And a little bit of push and pull, because I, and I know we think we talked about like elevation staggering based on flood plan or drainage.
Topography.
Thank you. And so some of those roof pitches would elevate. But I think there's also this sort of desire, and again, this is what I think what I was trying to share in the email from a visual person, so I sent you a pic. Just like slightly moving some of these units back and forth a little bit, a little play in the push-pull, dramatically alters that, right? And honestly, I think that's, I think that's what she's talking about, that this product feels like it's one long building, and it would benefit from just a little bit of like, you know, and again, I don't know what it costs. I'm a, I don't want to say more wrong, but, you know, I don't do what you do, so I don't know the figures. I don't know. You may say, we can't do that. We can't, we can't push and pull those things. Those aren't plans that we have. That's a whole new architectural starting point. That's going to cost us more money, and that may all be true. And at the end of the day, then, you know, we shake hands and unfortunately, but I'll bet a little bit of push and pull, you probably get bet a little bit of push and pull, you probably get most of the council here aligned if you're just breaking that building up. I think the roof pitch helps, but I think it's still on the ground level. It, it needs, again, if we're going to put them all in a line like this, we have, what are the, is there a development style for like those apartments that are like the four units, but it's like, they're like pinwheel style?
The fronts of these, like that garage is not all in one plane, right? So, that garage is not. Where that door is, where you see, sitting in the middle, that's 24 feet behind the front of that garage, right? So, push and pull, push and pull what? That's.
He's talking about the back. The fronts, yes, you've added some variance to the fronts, but the backs, you know, because reminds me, if you've been to Rick and Becker.
Sorry?
Have you been to Rick and Becker?
No.
So, there's barrack housing. And this is exactly what this looks like to me, is the barrack housing where they used to house our military. Very military-style backs, straightforward. I mean, I'm looking at the development that you have, Oak Harbor Village, and it, it's that very militant back on them. And, and I struggle with that, because it doesn't, it doesn't come across as friendly, it comes across, in my mind, as Rick and Becker Air Force Military Housing. Very militant, very straight-laced, and, and unfriendly. And so, I think, yes, the fronts of yours have depth, and they have some, some healthy look to them, but the backs are saying, welcome to military housing to me.
The backs along Hill Road have that articulation.
Just the Hill Road, though.
With the enhancement, well, those six buildings, there's only eight sixplexes, eight sixplexes in the whole project. Most of them are fourplexes or duplexes. So, again, shortening the lengths of those buildings, you know, changing that. And everywhere where you see the backs of the buildings, it's internal to the project. So, it's something that the residents, the people who are renting there are looking at, not someone driving down Hill Road is looking at, right?
But the residents that are back-to-back, like in the, it's not up on the screen, there's one section where it's like a little triangle, like a.
Wasn't it on the other one?
But they're, they're literally, the backs are just straight, no, like, yeah, can you get to me? So, like on the map, there's, there's a pod, and so all of those straight backs are going to look at each other. Because I'm looking, like I said, I'm looking at an example of it.
Yes, the backs of the buildings will look at each other internal to the project, correct. And then in, you know, one section, and then you've got another section where there's a larger green space area that's pretty far apart from each other. And then the other ones back up, the majority of them back up to the larger tree buffers on both sides.
There's four buildings that are, I think if we're looking at the same thing, there's four buildings that are, I guess, backing up to each other, four of the 20.
She's not looking at the current plan?
Yeah, let me get back to the current plan. So, like, here, when I'm looking, all of these are going to face back, and all of these are going to face, so it's probably going to have a single appearance of this, where it's all straight, straight, straight. Right?
Yeah, I mean.
So, that's what they would see on the inside.
For these four, these four buildings, these, these ones, I would say are a little bit different because of the open space, there, there is going to be a larger, I guess.
But it's still going to have the straight backs that are just, it would just be in a little bit different shape, is that what you're saying? Okay. Well, the decisions are, on how you.
Any other discussion?
The only question I would have is, if we were to not vote today, tonight, what would the process to meet look like for the group who needs to vote?
If you want to schedule something with me before you leave, I'm happy to do so. I mean, if we want to set up a date and see how many of us are available, we can do three of us in a room at a time.
Mr. Boggs is nodding, so, because we.
Right, if, if you do not have quorum, so four, then you, then you do not have to have a public meeting. The thing is just that those of you who are in different of those sessions can't be talking about them among yourselves outside of the public meeting.
One other question for, I guess, anybody, if we were to table, I believe I, correct me if I'm wrong, there was something where you had to have a bullet in 45 days of the public hearing? I understand that correctly.
Unless you choose to table.
Okay.
We cannot table.
There's a motion on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Shea, for the reminder. I would venture to say, if you elected to table this evening, that you would have an opportunity to meet with council in small groups in advance of our next meeting. I don't know if that means that you would have the opportunity to be back in front of the body for an official vote. You know, your, your conversation may dictate that you now want to make more changes and, and you're not going to be back until July. I, I don't know, but if your, if your question is, can you sit us down in a room and get us all consolidated before the next meeting, I would say yes.
Do you have other variations of products in the rental apartment space? Do you have other completely different?
Yes, we have high-rise residential in downtown Cleveland, we have garden-style product, we have, you know, Crocker Park, which is three, two and four stories above commercial, we have two-story walk-up product, and we have single-story living where you have a front door, a garage, and a back door you walk out. If we were to table, how are we on the next meeting, are we on the next meeting unless we push, or how does that?
Oh, I, I believe we can elect to postpone, and we can set a date for the postponement, or we can elect to table. But I think the last time we did this, Mr. Boggs' preference was to postpone with a date, and he's going to be different this time.
Correct. No, I do try to be consistent. Yeah, I, if the choice is to move to postpone, that can be, that is a subsidiary motion that can be done while the main, even though you have a main motion right now seconded, you can move to postpone to a date certain, and then that would put it on the agenda. If you just simply table it, it would die of its own accord if there's not action.
So, they don't want that either? We don't want that either. We don't want that for either. Sorry.
I just want to say, I think we're starting a bad precedent.
Okay.
I hear you all said.
At this point, we just need to know whether they want to table or want to vote.
I think they're asking. So, June 16th is our next meeting in June. I'm going to, because Mr. Boggs said I can do it, I believe at your request, you would like us to consider tabling this motion until the June 16th city council meeting?
Yeah, we'll make that request.
Okay.
So, we need to rescind?
Nope, not according to our council.
So, we don't need to rescind the motion?
So, it's a motion to postpone this matter that is pending before you on motion, motion postpone that to your June 16th meeting.
I just need a second.
Second.
Well, roll call on a motion to postpone until June 16th.
Who was the first, you, Mrs. Bennett?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Shea?
No.
Ms. Amick?
No.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
That was close. Motion to postpone approved. Yes, four, three?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, before you leave this evening, let's make sure we make time to arrange those meetings with members of council, and we'll coordinate with our legal counsel, make sure that everybody together in an appropriate manner. Sorry, I am off script. Ah, here we go. Ordinance 25-013, I believe this is on for first reading this evening. Clerk, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend section 905.02 of the codified ordinances of the Sayu Canal Winchester relative to maintenance responsibility for areas of, areas abutting streets, alleys, and public ways of the city.
That sponsor is Ms. Amos.
First reading only, please.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 25-014. Clerk, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance approving and adopting the 2026 tax budget.
The sponsor is Ms. Amick.
Thank you, first reading only.
Thank you. And final ordinance on for first reading this evening is ordinance 25-015. Ms. Pierce, could you read that one as well?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 52-01 to adopt the revised preliminary development plan for the Green Gate Plaza Development, a part of the original Pfeiffer Properties and PCV.
Thank you. Chair is the sponsor, and that is the first reading only for that. Council reports, we have our next city council work session and full council meeting on June 16th beginning at 6:00 PM. We also have a public hearing set for 6:30 that evening, that is the 2026 tax budget. As always, expect outstanding presentation by Ms. Jackson that evening. And then we will have committee of the whole on Monday, June 30th at 6:00 PM, and that will be where Mr. Peoples informed us, we will review the charter in totality. We also have included our back at the 2025 Council Connect meeting dates. The next date is June 21st, that'll be a Saturday from 9:00 to 10:00 AM here in Council Chambers. Then we will move to CDO Human Services, Mr. Shea.
The Human Services would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to the community for their continued support and generosity. The Brock Walk reminder will be occurring on, Brock Walk will be occurring on Friday, June 13th. Donation bags will be placed on porches Thursday, June 12th, and picked up Friday, June 13th. They are incredibly grateful to everyone who participates and helps us restock the pantry during the summer months. And then the United States Postal Service Food Drive, we'd also like to thank the community of local postal workers for their efforts, and the recent United States Postal Service Food Drive. This year, we received 1,569 items, which will go a long way in supporting individuals and families in need. They truly appreciate the generosity and passion of the Mount Winchester community and your continued involvement allows us to serve our residents and support our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. CDO ICC, Ms. Amick.
Thank you, I have nothing new to report. Our next meeting will be July 30th at 11:30 AM here in Council Chambers.
Thank you. That'll take us to CDO JR D, Ms. Amos and Mr. Moore.
A real funny story is that I set stuff out for the postal food walk, and my kid brought it back in and took it to the pantry because he thought somebody dropped it off for us. Our next meeting is June 19th, we'll be finalizing our details hopefully for our July party, lots of things. Fall registration opened today, so we're super excited about that and all the things that we are offering along that line. Do you have anything else, Mr. Moore?
I do not.
All right. We are, we are having a lot of fun.
Glad somebody, destination Canal Winchester, Mr. Busker.
Thank you. If you did not attend the canal's farmer's market, it is in its new location here at Stradly Park, it was a great time. We'd love to see you this coming Saturday. And if you need to know the dates of any of the activities in Canal Winchester, you can always download our app.
Thank you, Mr. Busker. CDO Chamber of Commerce, Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, just one event coming up to advertise the grand opening of Bellwood Farms, which is in the spot of the old Bluestone Farms. Come out on June 14th, it starts at 12:30, there's going to be live band, you can come see the restaurant, the market, the butcher shop, the farmhouse they have in the event center. I'm really excited to have them to be part of our community. This is a group of marine veterans that have come together to, you know, you know, run a pretty cool business that I think adds a lot of value to our community.
Jordan, are you able to add Sustainability Commission with Mr. Bennett on the next, for the next committee? He's going to be.
I've got reports to make.
He's going to have reports to make after this. Thank you.
The first meeting for the Sustainability Commission will be June 14th at 9:00 AM.
At 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM.
Should we rent a room?
Council Chambers, probably. I'll confirm with Mr. Peoples. He manages all my rooms. Or make sure I have rooms booked, because I get those emails. Where are you having this? Sorry, I digress. Any items for older new business this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Shea. Roll call.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.